Call the meeting to order. First line of business, if you all, everyone will please stand. Supervisor Mike Carter will have the invocation and Tommy Cundiff Supervisor will have our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice to see everybody here today. Let us pray. God of creation, you have blessed us with the changing of seasons. Remind us to take time to rest. Remind us of the wonder of your creations. Remind us that it is you who give us the breath of life. Guide us in our mission today to serve the citizens of Franklin County. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone here today. And before we get to the approval of the agenda, I would like to make a statement on behalf of the board. Recently, the town of Rocky Mount made a request from this board that we helped purchase a fire truck. And they were asking for, this board has given it a lot of consideration. And we made an offer last month that we would agree to give them fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years to help pay for that fire truck. I met with the mayor and town manager a few weeks back and they did not accept that request, that offer. And they made another request. I've spoken to the other board members and at this time, we will renew that request and that offer that we made. We feel that was a generous offer. It was a responsible offer. The county supplements the operations for the Rocky Mount Fire Department. And we feel that the offer of fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years is a reasonable offer. And that is our official offer that we are making to the town of Rocky Mount. And I just wanted to make that, make everyone aware that that, that is our decision. And, and that's, that's that. We, we feel that that's fair and reasonable. So, moving right along, the approval of the agenda. Any members have any additions or amendments or deletions to the agenda? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I will.
Okay, do we have a second?
Sorry.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call or? Okay, all in favor of, of the agenda as proposed, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The record show there are none opposed. Okay, at this time, we would like to recognize a department here at the county. And we'd like to take this moment to recognize the certificate of achievement for excellence in financing reporting given by the Government Finance Officers Association of Franklin County for our annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And is attained, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by our government and its management. This is the twenty-first year that Franklin County has received this prestigious award. At this time, I'd like to invite Director of Finance, Brian Carter, and along with the Finance Department and all their staff to meet me up front at the podium, please.
I tell you, when we train them, we train them though. They're good.
Hey, Brian, this is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting and presented to the county of Franklin County for annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And, uh, good job. One thing, each one of you for all you do. And I'd like to also say that, you know, we have a lot of excellence here in Franklin County. We have great departments, great individuals. And it's, the partners like this, you know, move a third of them to Franklin County. That makes it seven of us, pretty good, don't they? Thank you again for all you all do.
Brian not gonna give a speech? I mean, you know.
Mr. Chairman, as you come back to the dais, would you like to congratulate the Finance Department again? This is the twenty-first consecutive year, I believe, that the county has been recognized. And there's only a few localities nationwide that receive the distinguished comprehensive annual. And that's the county's audit and a lot of work goes into that. Next month, I'll give you a preview, next month, this, this same department will be back before you because we were just notified that for, and I don't know how many years this has been, many, many, many years that the counties received the distinguished award from GFOA for the county budget once again. So, great job to, to the team.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, please.
I've been on the board, this is my eighth year, and I have never went into the Finance Department that everybody dropped what they was doing to help me, gave answers to my questions. I, I pick on them pretty heavy, but they've always been very professional, very courteous. And that means a whole lot to me. I can understand now why y'all got the award. I just want to congratulate each and every one of you for what you do. And thank y'all so much for looking after this county. Thank y'all.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Thank y'all.
All right. Moving right along, we'll go to the consent agenda. I'd like to remind all the supervisors, if you have any questions about the consent agenda, please contact staff prior to our meeting to get those questions answered. At this time, what's your, uh, the consent agenda, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull number three.
Okay.
For discussion on when we get to other matters, supervisors.
Okay, so you want to pull number three and address it later on when we get to other matters?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman. On number one, the Faram College Public Safety Training MOU, I'd just like to give credit to Kathy Hodges at the Franklin Center for initiating that program.
Yeah, I would also like to comment on that. I've helped very little, but I have taken part in some of the planning for that program. And we're excited. It's a, gonna be a great partnership between the college and the county. And we picked up another partner just in the process. VCU is actually helping get it off the ground. And it's an exciting time, exciting program. And I think the county will benefit from it and I feel like the college will benefit as well. And I want to thank Mr. Ferguson and his staff for all the hard work that they put into this. Been a lot of hours that gone with this. And they, they've worked hard and very diligently with the college staff. And I, and I think it's gonna be a, a program that's gonna pay dividends in the future. Thank you. All right. Anyone else have any requests or the consent agenda? Okay, and items one, two, four, and five, what's your pleasure, board?
I move the approval.
Okay, do we have? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve items one, two, four, and five. Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call?
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. All right, moving right along, Brian Casella.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman Tatum, members of the board. Glad to be here before you today to give you the VDOT road report. Uh, we'll start with the maintenance activities for the previous thirty days. On Route two twenty, Virgut Good Highway, we had a pipe replacement just south of Grassy Hill. And we had a failed pipe there and so we've put some new structures in. We've got a patch on it for now and then we'll have our contractor come back and do a real final smoother patch once that's set. We have Route one twenty-two Booker T, Washington Highway. You may have noticed some work out there. There was a latex operation, actually from the Gilz Creek Bridge. I think on your report, we have one sixteen, but it's actually from the Gilz Creek Bridge up to six sixteen scrubs. They've got some temporary line markings on that, but they'll come back and finish with a, a final once. They have to let that latex cure before they can come in for the final ones. Moving down to the next sixty days, Route six thirty-six Hardy Road, we have various patching going on. You'll see right at the roundabout, as you come out of that curb on Hardy Road at the roundabout, some trucks and trailers are kind of tracking over on the side. So, we're gonna do some patching there as well as some alligator cracking along Hardy. Route two twenty, Mr. Mitchell, we've got a, um, the high friction surface treatment is gonna take place. We thought it was gonna be November, but I think it's gonna be actually this weekend. The contractor is coming out of Lynchburg, so we've been able to piggyback on their, their service.
Good thing we had demolition derby there this weekend.
Yeah. Understand.
Yeah.
So, we'll look forward to that. Actually, there's two places. We'll have the one in the curve right there, just below six nineteen, and then down towards Smith Store is another curb. So, we'll have both lanes.
Thank you guys for that. Thank you for staying consistent with it, Brian.
Yes, sir. Uh, let's see. Route one twenty-two Booker T, Washington, again, we've got some patching taking place down from once, uh, from Burn Chimney Road on down south. That's in advance of a, a plant mix. So, they're doing the patching and then they'll come back. And Route seven twenty-six, we've got, it's a wage gap road. We have a low water structure, getting ready to close that and there'll be a detour in place. We anticipate about three weeks for that closure. We can try to get it done sooner than that, but that's, that's our schedule. Over on page two here, we've got Route six forty-three Dylan's Mill. We had some work done to the bridge over the weekend. And so, they've put some new beams in place to get that structure so that it's no longer restricted. And then sometime between now and spring, there'll be a superstructure replacement. So, it was a fair amount of detail in that because the detour was Adney Gap. And if you all know Adney Gap, it's not a, it's, it's a very narrow windy road. And so, anyway, we got through that. Uh, let's see. Moving down to construction, we've got Route six fifty-nine Bar Ridge. We've completed the gravel section of that. That's our rural rustic, uh, one point seven miles. And our contractor will be coming back in the next two weeks to do the final surface treatment. So, it'll be three layers of tar and gravel to finish that project up. Down in traffic studies, we've got six ninety-one Taylor's Road. It's just a, a review for the existing school zone. We'll be replacing some signs. And then one twenty-two Booker T, Washington, Ms. Smith, we had the speed study that was done, actually, a request for the speed study. Our traffic folks looked at it. I think it was studied in two thousand and thirteen and then most recently in two thousand and twenty-one. They made a choice not to go out and do another study on that because when we did it in two thousand and twenty-one, we did reduce the speed limit all the way down to Harmony School from forty-five where it had been fifty-five right there at Booker T. So, they're just gonna continue to monitor it and as development activities occur, we can keep, keep an eye on it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And I think that concludes the report here. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have anything to Brian?
Hey, Brian.
Yeah.
Down there at, on two twenty at Willow Creek Road, with the pipelines, parking, all that equipment, those roads and the crossover even on, on top of the hill and around and down Willow Creek Road, those roads are getting tore all to pieces from those big trucks. And I didn't know if maybe there was something we could look into about them paying for that.
Yeah, in fact, if we can attribute it to their equipment and MVP's been pretty good about coming back and patching. A lot of times where they have their crossings where they're crossing our road, they'll, they'll have damages there and they'll come back and repave it. So, that's something we can certainly look at.
Yeah, there's a lot of damage there. And also, those trucks are running up and down Willow Creek Road right there. And I, I'd like to see something done to stop that. I don't, I don't think those trucks have any place going up and down that road.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, Mr. Cundiff.
Yeah. Thank you, Brian. I appreciate what all you do. Y'all do an excellent job, Frank County. Just give us more money, more roads, that's all I ask. But anyway, on Bar Ridge, uh, so they haven't done any primary paving yet. They're just getting the sur- surface ready to be paved.
We've got the ditches, yeah, the ditches are graded. We've put a bunch of pipes in. And so, we've got the, the final stone on, so to speak. But Patterson Brothers, our contractor, will be out there in the next couple of weeks and they'll actually do some shaping up. I'm sure, you know, it's got some activity where people are traveling over. They'll shape it up and then they'll, they'll shoot it with the tar and gravel.
So, how much longer thing it be before it be paved?
Oh, you give us two to three weeks.
Two, three weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this, uh, high friction pavement, that's some loud pavement. And when you got, is this designed to be like that or is this designed for mileage or what's it designed for?
It's actually designed to just enhance the friction of the surface. So, we have a, a number of crashes and there've been severe crashes in that curve. And our, our original test didn't show that we really had much of a friction problem, but it's, it's kind of a geometric problem in addition to the surface friction. And the two together are creating the, uh, when you get a rain event, early in the rain, vehicles are going around and they're either bouncing off the guard rail, going into the median. So, this is going to, um, this is our first step to address that problem. We're also gonna consider maybe a future smart scale project or something to adjust those lanes and see if we can maybe get some more super elevation in it or something to address that curve.
All right. Well, once again, thank y'all. Appreciate what you do very much. And I appreciate you answering questions.
Yes, sir.
Brian, I'd like to say, uh, you all just finished a box cover replacement on Coleman Switch Road in Faram a couple, week and a half or so ago. Just want to tell you, really looks good and they finished three weeks ahead of schedule and got that road open back up. So, the residents of Faram are happy and that makes me happy.
Excellent.
And to just tell your crew, I appreciate it and then they do a good job.
Yes, sir, will do.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Brian, I just wanted to thank you guys so much for the work being done on one twenty-two. It looks great and it's very appreciated. And just consider my renewal for my request for reflectors.
Yes.
On one twenty-two. If you all, we'll just keep that kind of top of mind as you address issues on one twenty-two. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't see anyone else, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, for our financial report this month, we're gonna see activity through the end of August. So, two months of the fiscal year, we'd expect sixteen point seven percent of the budget. So, looking at our revenues, our taxes are at or above that range. No major concerns on that. Some are pretty close there at sixteen point something. And so, we're gonna continue to monitor that. For our monthly ones, of course, our property taxes are more semi-annual or annual, so that, that will reflect differently. And the same thing on expenditures. The, the only areas over the sixteen percent are those where we typically front load things in the budget for service contracts or contributions, those that usually are posted in July or August. So, no concerns on the expenditures and the pace of them at this point. So, to graphically show that for you on the revenues, you can see year over year, we, we have slight increase, what we would expect to see overall. Break it down by categories. You see, we're pretty even across the major categories at this point. Other local taxes, state revenue, even property taxes for what is essentially some prepayments at this point or follow-up payments to the first half. So, our sales tax as of the end of August is ahead compared to prior year, same time of a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That's about a nine point eight percent increase, which is, is good growth. You can kind of see the line there with the increase. And that's about nine point eight percent, which it was nine point two percent growth in July. So, we are seeing an increase year over year. That's about eighteen point nine percent of the budget. So, ahead of that sixteen point seven percent benchmark we would be expecting.
Can I ask a question about that, Brian? That sales tax increase, how does that correlate with inflationary price increases of goods?
It will directly correlate as, because the sales tax is on the gross amount of the sale. So, as things cost more, you're gonna collect more in sales taxes. So, while they may be up, that doesn't necessarily mean we have more sales volume. It may just mean the goods that our citizens are purchasing are costing more. Yes, sir.
That's, that's the point I was making.
And, and at some point, they might not be able to purchase those things any longer as their budgets get stressed. So, something we watch, yes, sir.
Thank you, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, sir. No worries. So, for meals tax, now this is one where we are seeing a, a little bit of, uh, little bit of a contraction compared to July. As you can see the line, if I can get this up here, the blue line there, the light blue. And so, for, for August, that, which would have been July collections or activity and collected in August. So, it was fourteen point one percent in July. It is down to three and a half percent growth through August, still well ahead of the budget. So, if you look, it's twenty-three, almost twenty-four percent of the budget. So, instead of sixteen point seven, so not a major concern. While we had one month dip, you know, we're still well ahead of the budget where we'd expect to be this time of year. But back to Mr. Carter's comments, something that we're looking at as, as household budgets may continue to be stressed. So, the, the occupancy is, had a little bit better month. We were behind in July. We caught up, caught up a little bit, but still we're six point nine percent below where we were this point in time last year. That's still twenty-nine percent of the budget. So, again, we would want to be at least at sixteen point seven percent. So, still well ahead of the budget. So, from a budget standpoint, you know, revenues are trending very well. But compared year over year, we're starting to see a little bit of a contraction in the growth at this point. So, we'll continue to monitor. But at this point, August was a very good change of pace from what July was for transient occupancy. So, for expenditures, you can kind of see the, the graph there. So, they were up. We would anticipate based on the inflationary pressures that expenditures for the same services cost more money than they did this time last year. So, to, to show that, break it down by category, really everything is up a little bit. And, and so, there's no real concerns. That tends to be either inflationary anticipated or that tends to be personnel costs and the increase there from a labor market standpoint. But everything is within budget, so no major concerns on what we would anticipate with what would be projected increases. So, to break down health and welfare again, I'll show you, most social services is about level. You, you do see the increase in CSA costs. We are in that overlap period of closing out one fiscal year and still, and starting the new. And so, some of that probably has an impact there. But just keep in mind that we, we are having double-digit increases on the contracts that came back for our providers and they're, and they're not gonna be cheap. And so, we, we would anticipate seeing increased costs there if, if we had the same amount of kids. And we're just seeing a lot of children with complex issues that we're struggling to find placements for in various arenas. And so, that we're, we're doing what we can on that program. And it's, it's a statewide issue, certainly not indicative of just Franklin County. Okay. So, fund balance, this is still the audited number from last year. We're, our auditors will be with us the first week in October. So, we're continuing the march to clean up all of the year-end finances. We're still, as you can see, well above, we do anticipate a surplus for year-end operations. Very rough number, probably around the two million mark. So, we'll continue to firm that up. For October, your October meeting, we're gonna anticipate, of course, the rollover, the carryover requests from departments. Those were due just this past Friday. Staff will review those, vet those and bring them to you at the October meeting for consideration. And so, at that time, of course, we'll have a much firmer number for your consideration of any carryover.
Brian, if I can just interject a quick thought. I'm gonna be interested in seeing the requests themselves from department heads before you all throw those down.
And so, typically what we do is we provide a consolidated list. Each department submits their own. We put it consolidated, but it's pretty much a copy and paste from what the department requested to what the board sees. And then we put on their departmental savings for the year for the board to, to view. So, that typically is what we do. And those would be the unfiltered requests. We do not strike requests, sort of duplicative. Sometimes two departments might submit the same or some cleanup like that, wanna be clear. But they would be the, the initial raw requests in essence.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, from a capital project update standpoint, the literary loan, we did receive formal approval of that. And so, that three percent. And so, we're working with our school system on the timing and the drawdown. As you remember, there were several million dollars worth of one-time money, ESER money, essentially federal stimulus money that would be used for a proportion of this project. So, we have time on that, working with Davenport as we prepare the drawdown. But we have up to twenty-five million dollars on the literary loan for that project. Do not anticipate that we'll need to draw the full twenty-five million. The other thing that we're working on is working with school staff and Davenport to resubmit the construction grant applications for both the middle school project and then, of course, a new application for the CTE project. So, we, we had a, a conference call in essence with the Virginia Department of Education and so reviewed within the timeline and the grant parameters. So, that's something as we move forward, Davenport as well will be assisting us with it and submitting on our behalf. Something we'll keep you updated on, that, that will be a process come in the upcoming months.
Brian, I, I will just say that in my conversations more at the state level, this is getting a lot of scrutiny and criticism for the way this was managed out of the gate. And there is, it's still very questionable as to whether the General Assembly will renew these monies for the upcoming biennial budget. But I think suffice it to say, it is absolutely being noticed and critiqued that this thing got out of the gate in a very inappropriate manner with the scoring and how things were handled. So, that's just good news for us on the local level that it is getting the attention and that there is a realization that moving forward, if the General Assembly should allocate those funds, that they need to do it differently.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I think the, the first round was a little disappointing since we were rejected for a grant application. Hoping this round will be much more positive, certainly positive conversations that have had. And hopefully, from the state level, they'll realize the applications we submit are very solid projects and we're intent on forward with them through our previous communications, so. But very point very well made. It was a difficult process.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So, for economic update, we, we saw three point seven percent increase in inflation for the month of August, year over year. And so, that's, of course, still above that two percent benchmark that the Federal Reserve wants to get to. So, they're meeting actually today, tomorrow. We'll see what action they take. Some preliminary indications where they may stay, keep the level flat, no, no raises, no adjustments really at all at this point. I think they have one more meeting this year, this calendar year. We'll see what happens there. So, of course, with the higher interest rates, it's, things cost more to borrow, but it also is something that we're reaping the benefit of in our interest earnings. And so, we're continuing to monitor that as well because assumptions were made on those in our budget as well. So, any fluctuation in interest rates has an impact on us. So, we, we do finally have an amended budget. The General Assembly reconvened and in special session and passed a budget amendment for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. The governor signed it last week. And so, there, there's a lot of information in what came out. But really, at this point, what we're waiting on is all of the relevant state agencies to get information to localities. So, there, there's a lot abroad where there's so much money in this program or that program or for this area or that area. But really, till we receive from our corresponding state agencies, we do not know the exact dollar impact. There will be future discussions that we'll need to bring to the board for what that means for funding for either county or school system or social services, those type programs. So, as we receive that, have a better handle on it, that, that certainly will be something we'll bring back to you for discussion. And that's it. I'll be happy to answer any further questions.
All right. You don't want to have any questions for Mr. Carter? Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, back to CSA and the CSA expenses. As we move forward with the C- As we move forward with the CTE program, I know in our work session with the school system, they mentioned they may be able to utilize the old CTE building to house some of these these students speculatively. How much do you think that would lower our CSA expenses? I'm just curious looking forward.
Well, private day is a significant cost to the CSA budget. How much we, how many students we'd be able to keep local or we would still have to send to private day? I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer because each of those are driven by an individualized education plan. And so that would be a complete process outside of of our realm. But I think just anecdotally, the thought process has always been if you can keep them local, that you will save money. And so that's an analysis that we'll run. Even if it doesn't save money, I think our children are better served by having them service here locally with our school system and our local resources.
I agree. And I think as a board moving forward, we we really need to emphasize with the school system utilizing that building for that purpose. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I've brought up, you know, apparatus with you month after month. And, you know, I want to thank this board for the commitment they've made to purchasing this apparatus. This past Friday, there was a significant fire in Faram. But with decisions of giving our fire and EOMS people the tools they need, you know, with two of the more recent truck purchases that this this board has approved, they're able to save a majority of a significant business in the county Friday night. And I want to thank the board for continued support of our volunteer firefighters and our paid fire and EOMS. And, you know, doesn't just go to the fire trucks. We need to make sure we keep good, high-quality ambulances for public safeties, paid employees as well. I drove by the the place down at the county line yesterday coming back from Martinsville. And I think I saw three of our ambulances sitting in the parking lot. Ambulances are very important and we need to keep them on a consistent, frequent rotation because they get dogged and ran hard every day. So I want to thank this board for the commitment. Two of the more recent purchases that were approved here, we were able to get four thousand gallons of water on that fire in just a matter of minutes. So kudos to the board for that and kudos to our fire and EOMS people this weekend.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Carter. All right, Paul Chapman, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Linda Handy, Chair of Aging Services Advisory Commission.
You know, Paul, I'm about got to days I need to be in that.
All right, Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for having me and Linda here today to share with you some of the accomplishments that Aging Services has accomplished this past year. A lot of good things to share. I've wanted to first do a number of introductions before Ms. Handy has a few words to share. In attendance today, of course, we have Ms. Linda Handy. She's the chairperson for the Aging Services Advisor Commission, as well as we have Pauline Nickleston. She's in the audience here with her husband, Rick. And we also have Vivian Doyle. She's one of our newer members of the Aging Services Advisor Commission. She's here and she represents the Snow Creek District. We have a lot of other names I'm sure you'll recognize that are very active in aging services as well. Lee Prom from the Blackwater District, Gail Godd from Blue Ridge District, Benny Russell from Boone, Maggie Gray from Gills Creek, Bill Grucow from Union Hall, Pam Alfred from is at large, as well as Johnny Smith is at large. Some very active people. I'm sure you recognize me in those names. Before I turn this over to Linda, I also want to introduce some of our staff members that we have. We have just two full-time staff members. We have Marcia Cramblett with us today. She's the manager for Aging Services. She oversees that as well as community recreation. And Flo Brown, she's the she's here with us as well. She's the Aging Services Specialist. We have a number of part-time staff that really do a full-time lift. But we have Leon, he's the Leon Robertson, he's the person that oversees scheduling of transportation. Then we have a number of drivers. We have Buddy Craghead, Bill Helms, Curtis Robertson and Robert Wilson. They're all drivers. And we also have Christina Stumpf. She's one of the smiling faces you'll see as you enter in the Essex Center most days. But I'm going to turn this microphone over here just for a second to Ms. Handy to share a few things.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks to the board supervisors, the board of I'm sure they can hear me. Thanks to the board supervisors, the board of the Aging Services Advisory Commission now has full membership from each electoral district. And we can better serve the county now. We also have three members at large. We appreciate your support and your assistance as we go about trying to fulfill our mission, which is to make aging better in Franklin County and to enhance healthy aging. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Linda is a is a huge asset. Let's see, the mission of Aging Services is is to foster the wellbeing of seniors in Frank County through programs, information and activities that promote healthy aging. But before I kind of go over our accomplishments, I thought I'd go over just some quick facts specifically about Franklin County. Did you know that twenty-five percent of citizens in Frank County are sixty-five or older? So I compare that to the state. So seventeen percent is the state average. So we're significantly higher. I kind of knew that already, but even I wasn't aware it was quite that high. And this trend is, we're expecting this trend to continue. All these studies are coming out that people, especially in rural areas, are continuing to age in place. That means people love where they are and they want to stay there. They're not looking to move to a new location. So I think you all probably nod your heads and know family members or friends or neighbors that are in that situation. And I guess something that's very relevant to Franklin County and today, one of our pressures is during COVID, you know, seniors, there's were a population high risk. And so we're the ones that were really isolating themselves during COVID. And so loneliness and isolation were a big problem. But now that COVID, the pandemic is is over, we're seeing this huge resurgence of activities and people engaging and looking to get out, and that need is really growing. So here are some, I'm all about numbers. So I'll share with you all some numbers, some trends. These are, this is the amount of people that walk into the Essex Recreation Center. And so these are just monthly tallies. And so we had over forty thousand people that utilized the Essex Recreation Center last year. So big numbers. But I guess I want you to pay attention mostly to these blue dotted lines. And these are like the trends. And so if this was dipping down, it'd mean that our overall, our numbers were decreasing. If it was level, it means that, you know, pretty much staying the same. But as you'll notice, this one is pointing, it's going up. So it looks like this trend throughout the year has been growing, just like we're seeing this. People are coming back out and looking to engage. Our partners, more and more people of that age are looking to need services. And so this is growing and we can, we perceive this, you know, attendance to increase throughout the year. Right? How about programs offered? How are staff, how are they engaging these people that are walking into the Essex Center or looking to for services? Throughout the year, there was one hundred and sixty-eight different activities. So this might be a cooking class, a health and wellness class, a yoga class, a pickleball class. These are things that you might sign up for. So there's one hundred and sixty-eight different activities. These aren't, might not be a one-time activity. It might be a repeat thing where people come back time and time again. So one hundred and sixty-eight different activities are offered throughout the year. And again, you'll see this trend is continuing up. So we see that we're offering more and more programs. So this leads us to the next one. Are people, are people participating? Are people, we can offer tons of programs, but it's it's not much worth much if people aren't actually engaging and utilizing them. Well, this shows people, persons being served. You'll notice again, that blue dotted line is again going up. That shows that more and more seniors, and these are people that sign up for activities. So we had over eight thousand seniors sign up for a program or a class or might have gotten transportation to a medical or dental appointment. So again, this trend is growing and we can see this, you know, this trend is going to continue in the future. All right, I'm a big number person, I'm a big data person. That's what I drive on. So I've been talking a lot to your, oh, I skipped a slide. Let me let me go to this first. Transportation, this is on efficiency. So we provide medical transportation for qualifying seniors. And this is one of those things that's really needed. And we see about how many, so we're providing more and more rides, serving more and more people. But our, is our mileage going up? You know, it's gone up a little bit. This is one of those ones that I can see trend lines rather flat. And so this one has only grown minimally. In fact, I went back nine years ago and our transportation total miles for the year is when it was probably an eighth of the number of people we served was about the same. So we're serving many more people than we were when we first started to now with just a few more miles. So I think this speaks speaks well to our drivers and our transportation coordinators and our staff that are organizing those things. All right, I skipped ahead. So I'll now go to my point is that I'm a big data person. I speak, big data speaks to me. But let me, I've been speaking to your heads, but now let me speak to your hearts. So this is, of course, a photograph that was taken at the Essex Recreation Center. And so I think if I was sitting down here at this like this table with these folks and I spit out all these numbers, that they'd go in one ear, that that doesn't really, you know, resonate with me. Probably, it probably wouldn't resonate with them. So but if you sat down and talked to them, and I know many people know these folks too, that like, gosh, you know, my neighbor, this person I go to church with is just started dialysis and they're not sure how they're going to get to their appointments. They're really stressing out. It's not only they have these medical appointments they have to worry about and these health concerns, but how are they going to get there? That's one of those things that we do. So we can, we meet that need. We can help you out with that. So that's one of the things that we can help out with. So that was one of the things that would resonate. If you were somebody that says like, gosh, you know, since my my spouse, they passed away and COVID, it's I just got so lonely and I'm just really bound in depression and I'm really not connected with the community more. We have programs. We have like matinees, cooking classes, bridge, knitting, trips. There's all these different ways, congregate meals, the list goes on and on. Pick up our playbook and you can see pages of different activities. So there are ways that we can, hey, do you know what? That's okay. Let's get you plugged back in. You can make some friends and network and, you know, learn some skills along the way. That's if I was sitting at this table, I bet you that would resonate with some folks. Or maybe these folks like, gosh, you know, my my check is just not going as far as it used to. I really have a hard time filling the pantry. Or there's a person, my neighbor, who's can hardly, you know, put good produce on her table. It might be having a hard time. And we do soup for seniors where we collect food and distribute to seniors in need. Or the Senior Giving Tree, we give out things and let people know that they're being cared for. We have the Giving Garden, lots of things where we meet, you know, those people in need and let them, not only give them some supplies, but also know they're, you know, they're cared about and part of our community. So Aging Services does a whole lot. I think we have the numbers that show for it. And anyway, talk to these guys, talk to myself, talk to staff. And there's just some like truly heartwarming stories about people. For instance, one of the stories that got me the best was there was a gentleman, and I know him, and his mom had passed away. He came in after his mom passed away and said, gosh, she was a regular here at the Essex Center and you just don't know how much this means to her and how important this was in her daily life. And so he came in and just, you know, thanked staff for that. So I'm sure you all know some people like that. And anyway, that's that's really where Aging Services' story is. So I'm going to lead into this next one. So it's actually this upcoming Thursday. Don't just take my word for it. Come on out. We have this thing called the Senior Expo. Flo and Marcia really put this one together. And this year, it's eighty-two, eighty-two different vendors, which is the Essex Center is going to be packed on Thursday. It's a good problem to have. We're, they've been stressing about parking and getting people in and out. It's going to be great. So we'll have eighty-two vendors. And this, the purpose of this, the Aging Expo, is that we do try to meet all needs. But to be honest with ourselves and you all, we can't meet all needs. But if we can't help every senior out there needs, we might be able to get them in touch with the resources that they need. So that's what this expo is. If a person is in need, maybe it's their their parents, their neighbor, a friend, something like that. They come there and maybe it's a public or a private, a nonprofit organization. They'll all be there so they can find out and get connected with the resources that are available to them. That's probably one of the biggest things we hear is that people that aren't aware of the resources are available to them so they can age in place and be happy in our community. So anyways, this is an amazing event. It's this Thursday from ten until two. There'll be food trucks, music on a stage out in the front, yeah, tons of vendors, demos. It's going to be an amazing event. These ladies have put in a lot of hard work on that. So I encourage you all to come out to that. All right, so in conclusion, just a few points, I guess I wanted to just really drive home is that Aging Services has really kind of, we change to meet whatever the changing needs are. During COVID, when food insecurity was a big thing, we were out there delivering food to people in need. Now that isolation and, you know, getting out in the community is a big need, we're pivoting more in that direction. But that's the beauty of Aging Services. We're always nimble and can can change in those directions. And even comparing, I think you should be very proud of your Aging Services staff and the Aging Services Advisor Commission. Compared to other folks in our region, we have the most to offer, more to offer than any other community around. That being said, I don't think we should just pat ourselves on the back and walk away. There's a lot of places, especially those more remote or outlying areas in Franklin County. We just, I think those are the areas that we're still not impacting as maybe as much as they should be. Anyway, there's lots of needs and I won't go into all those. But maybe come budget time, think about this presentation. We'll have some budget requests for sure. And we'd just like to thank you all for your support. If you have any questions, myself or staff, Aging Services Advisor Commission members, anybody would be happy to answer questions you might have.
You don't want to have any questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Chapman, I want to thank you for giving us such a good, well-rounded annual report. And I really want to thank those of you that are in attendance with us today and the staff and for the commission. That is a, that is a labor of love to serve on that commission. And I'm very grateful to you for that. And Paul, I will say that it's pretty remarkable to me, under your leadership and and those that make up this team, you stay very responsive to the ever-changing needs in the senior population. And that is really something that should not be overlooked because senior needs have really evolved, I think, pretty significantly over the last ten years and will continue to do so. But I applaud all of you for your responsiveness and ability to to pivot when needed.
Go ahead.
Just a comment, just want to thank, thank all of you. I think what you guys are doing is remarkable. And I thank you guys for your commitment to it. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Handy has invites and for the Expo this upcoming Thursday. So this is to help you.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you. Well, that's great. I was at the Expo last year.
Thank you.
I will be out of town this week, unfortunately, and will miss it greatly. But I can vouch, it is a wonderful event. It's well done and you enjoy a good response to it. So I wish you all the best of luck this week.
Anyone else have, go ahead, Tommy?
Well, I'd like to thank Mr. Chapman for the hard work he do and all for the members that do really give seniors a place to go, a place to be with the other seniors. I don't care what anybody says, older people have more to talk about than younger people do. And we we reflect back, but I think this is something that the county needs, something that we should support, but no problem. I have no problem in all supporting this. And I just thank y'all so much for who you are, helping our seniors. And Paul, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Like Sid, you know, you may be shorter than I am, but I look up to you. Thank y'all. I really appreciate what y'all do very, very much. And thank y'all for the bag, too. I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just maybe a little history background for the Board of Supervisors and the and the public and so forth with with Aging Services. If you go back around forty years to the early nineteen eighties, a group spun off really from Faram College to start the Aging Services Department there at Faram College on the campus. And that later grew and it was forever housed in, if you all are familiar, on Tender Road, the old American Legion Building, in the basement of the American Legion Building. And it was just ten years ago, a little over, that that's where that department was housed. There was no handicap accessibility. It was in a basement. It was appreciated for the decades and and served in the eighties and nineties and two thousands. But over the last ten years, to see where Aging Services has grown under the county's leadership over the last ten years with the Essex Center and certainly the Aging Services Committee, it's just tremendous really to see this evolve. And so that's just a little bit of background, maybe for the public and for the board and and our commitment to the senior population here in Franklin County.
Mr. Chapman, I'd like to echo what some of the others Mr. Chapman, I'd like to echo what some of the others have said. The work that you all do with our seniors is remarkable and greatly appreciated all over the county. You know, often when we think about Parks and Rec, we think about the kids playing ball, whether it's baseball, soccer, basketball, whatever. But, you know, we can't forget about our seniors. I mean, they are, there's so much wisdom and so much knowledge there that we need to hang on to for as long as we can. And, you know, it just benefits us all so much better by having our seniors active in our communities and, and, you know, just learning from them and providing services to help them to age healthy, you know, as they get older, have a healthy, safe lifestyle, whether, you know, they need the transportation or whatever. I just appreciate everything that you all do. And Mr. Whitlow, come budget time this year, we have put a lot on, Mr. Chapman and his staff, we need to keep them in our minds and remember them come budget time when, if we have the funds to, for some of these positions. We're putting a lot on them. We need to give them the staff to take care of these jobs. Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Chapman, I'd like to add something.
Go ahead.
Please. When you're young, you don't have time to reflect back. I didn't mean that young people had nothing to talk about. But I'm just saying, you become a senior, you look back and got more time to reflect and see the changes in your life. And I'll never forget, I was twelve years old, my granddaddy, he wanted to give him a hand up. He was sitting. So I gave him a hand up. He looked at me and he said, you know, one of these days you're gonna be like me. I thought, twelve years old, ain't no way I'm gonna hit me up. But I sure don't mind it now. But like I said, once again, thank y'all. Thank y'all for what you do. And seniors, the seniors have so many stories to tell. And I look back, my grandmother, she sat on the porch. I was so busy, I didn't stop and talk to her. And I've regretted that ever since then. Cause seniors are so full of knowledge, what goes on, what's went on. I just appreciate all y'all. Thank you so much.
Just since I had this opportunity, I just wanted to just give one more recognition for Marcia and Flo. They just work tirelessly. They, you can tell their, Parks and Recreation is one of those things, Aging Services is one of those things, it's just, you have a calling for it. And you can tell they have the calling for it. They just pour themselves in there just tirelessly. And they're, they're really the ones that should be credited with all the accomplishments. And there's even a few times I'm like, are you, y'all might need to dial it back. Y'all are working so hard. I don't want y'all to burn out. And they just still go full tilt. So anyway, they're just great staff. And I encourage you all to, if not this Thursday, stop by any time and see them. Sometimes unannounced visits are always a great way to see people, what their really productivity is. So anyway, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chapman, I think that you and your staff and ladies and gentlemen that are here today deserve a round of applause from this board. And I'd like to offer that too at this time. Thank you again. Kevin Tosh.
He always looks so happy. He always has a smile on his face. I love you, Tosh.
Y'all see the medication he takes.
So we've got a couple of different things on the agenda today. And I think the first one, so as you know, with the Tourism ARPA funds, we are still working to, to spend down those funds. A broad day spending plan before you in the past that was approved by this board. We are in the process of finalizing and completing phase one of that, which was our market research analysis and visitor study. We should have that back this month. So now I'm coming to the board to request a contract award for phase two of this ARPA project. This board kind of approved us to advertise for the RFP back on their July the twenty-eighth meeting. We then published the RFP on July the thirtieth. And the bids were due back and the proposals were due back on September the first. And then when I went into Brian's office on that Friday afternoon, he hands me fifteen RFP proposals to go through. So we had a huge response. We had a large pool of different design firms that would love to work with Franklin County. So that was a good feeling to have. We took those fifteen proposals. We went through an initial review process. We kind of broke them down into our top five choices. And then we held interviews of those top five choices. With that being said, we then whittled the top five down into our top firm, which we're bringing to you today. And that top firm would be Paradise Company out of St. Petersburg, Florida. They're looking to expand northward. They're as far north as North Carolina at this point. But again, they're continuing that northward progression and would love to work with Franklin County. We think that their style kind of matches what we're looking for. As we're a very diverse county, as we look to create a visitor-focused sub-brand. So again, that's kind of what we're looking for today. As far as funding for this, it's already, that money is sitting inside of a tourism grant line item in the tourism budget. We have enough to cover this portion of the project, which is budgeted at no more than forty-five thousand dollars. And at this point, I would take any questions that you may have regarding this.
Do you want to have any questions? I don't see any.
We'll just need the, the board to.
You need a motion and we need action on this.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to authorize execution of contracts, Paradise Advertising and Marketing Incorporated, for the completion of phase two of the Tourism ARPA Project. Tourism sub-branding and marketing collateral with a budget not to exceed forty-five thousand. Authorize the county administrator and county attorney to execute the contract on the county's behalf.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Madam Clerk, you take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Kerman Tatum?
Yes.
With that, we'll move on to a short recap of our Franklin County Agricultural Fair. So as you know, our agricultural fair was a month of go in the month of August. It ran August sixteenth through the nineteenth. Just gonna walk through some photos. We know that a lot of you were there at the fair. We're kind of gonna walk you through the timeline of events. These are some photos from our school visit. We're all the first, third, and fifth graders from Franklin County Public Schools. We're in attendance at the Agricultural Fair. They had a great time. Lot of great organizations here, including Skills USA, the FFA at the high school. You also see the Jacktail Players, our good friends at the Southwest Virginia Antique Farm Days, we're crushing rocks. And you also kind of see some of the animals that were on display. A lot of fun were had by the kids. And a great job by Franklin County Public Schools for assisting in a quick turnaround. I think this was day five or six, depending on when they came, of their school year. So it was a great effort there by the school system. Then we had our opening ceremonies and we had a great group of folks cutting our ribbon there and a lot of good folks from the band, as well as our FFA, our pageant winners, as well as the Virginia Cooperative Extension and others were there. Last year, if you remember, we had a special guest that was a cow. This year, we had two goats as our special guests for our opening ceremony. So they were a little bit better behaved maybe than, than our cow was. And this was kind of our attendance for our opening ceremony. It was a little overwhelming on Wednesday, typically a lower attendance day, that we had this number of folks waiting for the, the gates to open up on that Wednesday. Also, a big thank you to the Virginia Cooperative Extension and the Master Gardeners for our competitive exhibits. A little bit of a change this year, we moved them under the large shelter and that was well-received by a lot of the community. A lot more folks went through and saw all the wares. And they also had a record number of entries this year. I don't know if you see it there in the middle, but they also incorporated a couple of different competitions this year. They had a watermelon eating contest. They had a turkey calling contest, a frying pan contest, frying pan throwing contest, and a best beard competition. So again, just a lot of opportunities to get the community involved. And a lot of smiling faces and a lot of blue ribbons were handed out. Again, our Pageant Queens, they were on-site all week long, ranging from the littlest of our queens all the way up through our Miss Franklin County Agricultural Fair contestant winner, who will go on to represent us at the state pageant. Great music all week long. We had our petting zoo as always, games. We had our Blue Ridge Lawn Tractor Pull on Friday night. This was a huge success. If you, our good friends at Jewel Machinery, one of our sponsors of the fair, said that they would like to bring out one of their excavators and let kids of all ages use the excavator. Made Paul a little bit nervous, but it was completely controlled by a remote control and they were able to stop it at any point. But this was a huge success all week. We also had Bootleggers Canines located here in Franklin County out doing canine demonstrations. And I, I love this picture, not because it's the best picture of the fair, but just the sea of people as you kind of look back towards the entrance. This was taken on, on Friday, of course. And then our Volunteer Fire Association, and I hate to start listing people because you'll start to forget. But again, just lots of smiling faces, folks out there participating in the fair. This is kind of an overview, kind of a bird's eye view. This was right as the gates opened on Friday. Kind of gives you an overview of what the fair looks like. And if you've been to the fairgrounds recently, this picture is a lot flatter than the, the real estate is there. But you kind of get and see where things were located. I love this picture because it shows the parking lot across the way. In this picture, it looks like there's more cars than people when the gates opened on Friday. But folks were, were super excited to get there. And again, just a full parking lot on that Friday. Looking at our daily attendance numbers, you see we had a huge opening night, eleven hundred and sixteen folks. And a big reason for that is we did free general admission to all students. That was from birth through college age. Looking to get a little bit of the pressure off of Friday, as typically that was an overloaded night, and maybe a little pressure off of Saturday. So that was a huge success. Continued that into Thursday with higher numbers. Friday, again, saw a consistent number, but we were also better prepared. We had a couple of our board members manning some tables, helping to get the lines down as we, we got through that. And then on Saturday, again, a great attendance there with a new record for the four days of nine thousand two hundred and eighty-five people. So very pleased with that. And then just a quick look at the financials. This was as of yesterday. So we still have a couple of invoices that are outstanding, looking to come in. Total expenses for the fair, you know, right at a hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. We offset that with sixteen thousand, five hundred in sponsorship for this year. Our food vendor fees at twenty-seven hundred. Ticket sales, ice sales, and merchandise were ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine. So our total revenue was a hundred and thirteen thousand and forty-nine dollars. So that ultimately means that the cost of the fair to the county for this year was twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and seventy-three cents. If you want to break that down further, Paul's a numbers guy. I am too. County personnel accounted for fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars of that. Our three days of school visits was right at ten thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. And then, so the fair itself had an operating deficit of two thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and twelve cents. Break that all down, the board appropriates right at seventy-five thousand dollars each year. As of right now, we hope to have left in that fund after everything is paid up, probably close to forty-five thousand of that left. So we are, are proud of that. And we are making that a point. Folks are continuing to come out to the, to the fair. And if, again, I said it last year, I'll continue to say it, we hope in the future to make the fair self-sufficient. So that, that is a continued goal. It's maybe something that might not be attainable, but we're gonna strive for that each year. But if anybody has any questions regarding the fair, I'd be happy to answer them.
This is very good. That's very good. Two thousand dollars is not much for the publicity we get. Y'all did a good job. Thank you. This is the first time or the second time that we didn't have to use that rain insurance.
We didn't use it last year and we didn't use it this year, that I know of, so.
Second time that we've not had to use a rain insurance. Cool. Good job.
Yep. Excellent job. And I heard a lot of good compliments and you and your staff and, and Paul and his staff. And I think I made a comment down there that you basically are staff of one. So, good job.
Thank you, thank you. And we've got one more item for today, now that I've buttered you up. But if you would humor me for just a second, cause I think this kind of sets the stage for, for the kind of the whole idea behind this third line item. It's part of the larger marketing effort, but it's, it's a short video. I think it's a minute and a half long. But it kind of shows where fishing plays into, excuse me, the tourism efforts that we have here in Franklin County. So. We shall see if this plays.
You gotta leave it better than you, you found it. That's my theory. And I see no reason why we can't have fifteen pound fish here in the future. A handful of us back in two thousand and fifteen just thought it would be nice to have a more aggressive, faster-growing breed in the F1s. The F1 is a Florida bass that grow quicker. We got about a pound to a pound and a quarter growth per year.
So we worked with the game department and the biologist here. And the ideal was thrown out to, you know, crossbreed bass that could be stable in this fishery. And it's been going on now about eight years and it's been very, very successful. The quality of the fish is, is definitely improved.
Just this past spring, we've had five fish that was weighed in over nine pounds with nine point three six being the largest of the spring that I've heard of.
I've been fishing this lake for around twenty-five years and fished most of the fisheries in Virginia. And it's by far, as far as the numbers of quality fish, there was more here than anywhere else.
A lot of people travel for bass fishing in the tournaments and, and vacations. And as long as we keep our bass numbers up here, then that keeps tourism going. It keeps tax dollars going. Local businesses such as restaurants, marinas, gas stations, and the better the fishery, the, the more they'll travel. We want to have that trophy population where you can come here and catch your fish of a lifetime.
I can say, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So again, hopefully that kind of sets the stage for this, this next part. So Chairman and members of the board, I come before you today with an opportunity that we've been presented here with Franklin County and Smith Mountain Lake to host the premier catfish trail. So it's a little bit different from bass. Smith Mountain Lake is known for its bass fishing. It hosts numerous large-scale tournaments throughout the year, including the, the Big Bass Tour, which comes twice a year. But this is an opportunity to kind of expand on that a little bit and venture out a little further past bass fishing and into the, kind of the catfishing aspect of it, that we all know that not only Smith Mountain Lake, but Phil Pot Lake also is well-known for that. But this opportunity, you know, kind of, you know, why are we, we targeting fishing events? I know that may be a thought that's running through your head, kind of looking at our strategic plan. It promotes our natural assets. We have Smith Mountain Lake. We have Phil Pot Lake. We have all of the great outdoor recreational amenities that Parks and Rec's putting out there. And it's a great opportunity to use those to showcase what we have here in Franklin County as a travel destination. Fishing is also multi-generational. It's family-oriented travel. And it's also has a low-cost entry. If you know a fisherman though, that low-cost entry quickly turns into a very expensive hobby, as many do. But again, that cost entry is very low. And then as you heard Dwayne talking about there in the video, the economic impact, because it touches many different sectors, including, you know, obviously gas and lodging, food and beverage, retail, recreation, local services. So again, the economic impact kind of touches a wide range of things. So when you look at the King Cat Trail, to kind of give you a little bit of an idea, it's a national catfish tournament trail that's owned and operated by Bob Denon, Andy Denon, and TJ Perkins. And kind of their goal is to find tournament sites that are located in different markets throughout the United States to give them a chance to promote their different sponsors that they have to promote the locality. But also allow the local anglers in each district the opportunity to compete on a truly national trail. Cause unlike other tournament trails that may be of the national level, this series offers an opportunity for local anglers to participate against their national counterparts. Whenever I look at, at different sporting events that we may be looking to bring to the area, one of the first things I do is I go and look at their sponsors and I see if they get buy-in from the community, if they get buy-in from the industry. And as you see, some of the, the list of current sponsors that the trail has, including Bass Pro Shop and Cabela's, Costa Sunglasses, Yeti Coolers, Lowboats, if you're in the fishing world, Power Pole, Garmin. All of these great sponsors have bought into this tournament trail, which kind of gives it a little bit more teeth. King Cat kind of operates under a three-fold methodology. They want to educate, give people resources on how to catch bigger and, and catfish, entertain. They do that through their television show and their social media. As well as promote conservation, which includes catfish populations and improving the waterways and localities that they go to. Couple of the, the numbers, twenty twenty-two, they had three hundred and sixty-one anglers. Up until this point halfway in their season, they've had about five hundred and six unique anglers at their different tournaments. They have a large social media following. They have a television show on their Pursuit Channel, which gets between sixty and sixty-six thousand monthly viewers. It's the number one fishing show on the Pursuit Channel, the number two show on the, the network there. And they also have a weekly podcast that averages right at fifteen to seventeen hundred listeners, as well as a live stream of all of the way. And they also have a weekly podcast that averages right at fifteen to seventeen hundred listeners, as well as a live stream of all of the weigh-ins. Again, here's the team members that will be, would potentially be working with Franklin County, including the owners there on the left. But there on the right, you see Alicia Banks, Scott Peavy, Olivia Osteen in the middle, and then Kevin Grant. They were some of the folks that came down and visited Smith Mountain Lake and deemed that this would be an ideal location for a twenty twenty-four stop. The event itself, which is kind of the mainstay, it would be a two-day event happening October eleventh and twelfth of twenty twenty-four. So it would be next fall. It would give an entire year of promotion leading up to it. It would also be a signature series event, which there are only ten of those on their trail. They have a twenty-event schedule. Ten of them are considered signature series events. So not only are anglers participating for the purse for just that event, but also points for a much larger title at the end of the year. And this would be held at Smith Mountain Lake. It would then include a nationally televised show, as we talked about earlier. But it would also have a conservation and outreach event, which would be King Kids, which would be for any local anglers, young folks to come out, receive some free fishing equipment and have a great time learning from the professional anglers. And also, as I said, local teams would be eligible for this event. The entry fee for this event would be three hundred dollars per boat. That includes for all the professionals, as well as our locals. One hundred percent of the entry fees that are paid in are paid back out to the winners. That includes big fish honors. And that signature series at the end of the year this year, they're going to pay out over seventy thousand dollars in the signature series. They're upping that to a hundred thousand dollars next year. So you'll get a bigger buy-in from across the country. This was their last event, which is considered a local event, so not a signature series event. They had twenty-six boats and the purse, as you see there, ninety-eight hundred dollars. First place turned their three hundred dollars into four thousand. But then the kind of a similar example to us would be the first signature series event was held in Williamsburg this year on the James River. They had forty-nine boats. And remember, there are up to three anglers on each boat, and that was the payout for that. So again, quickly walk through the timeline of events. If we're awarded one of the tournaments for twenty twenty-four, they'll make a series announcement. And at that point, anglers will start making their preparations to visit Smith Mountain Lake in preparation for this tournament. Because this will be their first time visiting Smith Mountain Lake for a lot of these anglers. So they're going to want to get in here in October and November of this year, do pre-fishing, have a little bit of a better understanding for October of next year. They say on average, teams will come in at least two separate times prior to the event and typically stay for two days, which would incorporate a weekend. So then after the announcement, they would promote it on their King Cast podcast each week. They would have a tournament recap, they would have a tournament preview, do catfishing news. And then I was talking to them this week where it says host location event preview. That is actually something they started doing weekly on their podcast after visiting Smith Mountain Lake. They came to Smith Mountain Lake, we actually took them to Crazy Horse Marina, they asked about the Pirate Out Front. Chris started talking about the Pirate Days. They thought that was such a great event, they wanted to talk about it on their podcast. So now if there's a large event such as Pirate Days, you know, any type of large event going on in the county, we let them know and they promote it on the podcast as well. Then on Thursday, October the tenth, there will be a captain's meeting where all the captains get together, they'll have prize drawings. Then there will be in-person live weigh-ins on October the eleventh and twelfth, so the general public can go out in the afternoon and see the weigh-ins. But the weigh-ins will also be broadcast live across their Facebook. On the Saturday, October the twelfth, will be the King Kids Event. This is one of their more recent events. And then in twenty twenty-five, so following the event itself, the King Cat Television Show will air on the Pursuit Channel. Once it airs on the Pursuit Channel, then it lives in perpetuity on their social media, including their growing YouTube channel. And then after that, they continue to promote promote the host location. This was a post they made this past week. They were traveling from one tournament to another and they stopped in a place where they had already had a tournament. And again, kind of stayed in that location as a stopping off point. Do want to say a big thank you to VBR Sports, to AG and John, along with myself. We met with the King Cat staff back on July the twenty-seventh here at Smith Mountain Lake with Chris and Crazy Horse Marina. They love the area, they love the lake, they wanted to to get things going as quickly as possible. So we received great feedback there. And ultimately, it comes down to the total cost to host this event is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And that does include the two-day signature series event, the nationally televised tournament coverage. They're going to bring an entire media team in, so it will not just be on-water stuff. They're going to be getting a lot of our local attractions, so it'll be a much bigger promotional piece. Their social media promotion, as well as the King Kids Fishing Event and the local angler participation option. This is some numbers provided to us by VBR Sports and kind of preface all of this, so it kind of gives you a window to look into. This is based off of one hundred and twenty anglers, so this could be sixty teams of two, this could be forty teams of three, it could be anywhere in between. And then an average of two and a half spectators per angler, whether it be their husband or wife or kid or grandparents. So again, you're kind of getting that spectator range. Our average daily rate for short-term rental is about two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So put all of that together, they put it into their funding model. And if one hundred and twenty anglers and two and a half spectators per angler would be a local economic impact of three hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty cents. Again, if there are less participants, that number would go down. Flip side, if there's more participants, that number could go up. And then I don't know if Chris or Brian want to take this, but I believe that county staff has found an avenue to fund this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, when Kevin brought this to us, I thought, wow, this is this is a really, really good opportunity. Not only this, when funds are available, but as we look going forward, I know it's part of the county's strategic plan. We know this last year, working with our partners, VBR specifically, on bringing the National Amateur Cycling Championship to Franklin County with major impact and so forth on our restaurants, service stations, lodging, et cetera. And so to put in for this bid, as noted, there is a contingency account that was initially set up with our COVID dollars about three years ago. And part of that account initially, see Mr. Chapman in the audience, helped spur the Land of Lights. And from the Land of Lights, we used some of that money, because when everyone was quarantined and could not socially interact and so forth, what could you do? You can get in your car, you can go to the recreation park. And now, and now that ongoing series seems to be one of our largest attended events in, you know, Franklin County and brings a lot of people through the park. Very similarly, that same line item has a balance of dollars. And so these these dollars are available in that COVID contingency line item account. And quite frankly, they need to be spent down from that account. From an auditing perspective, I guess, Mr. Carter, as I look at our finance director. And so we were fortunate to identify that line item as well as using that line item previously on the consent agenda for the Land of Lights that the board had previously approved a little bit earlier in today's meeting. So if the board has any questions, the funds are readily available in that line item account.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The, this, Act Fair, we had seventy-five thousand set aside for that. And there are like twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars left over from the seventy-five, based on that. Did I understand that correctly? As far as what it came in under the seventy-five thousand?
For the agricultural fair?
Yeah.
There would be money left over in that account as well.
Enough money left over there to fund this. Just throwing it out there.
Sure. And and I will say, that's a good point, Mr. Mitchell. I will say, in addition to an opportunity here with King Cat, we are working with Virginia's Blue Ridge as well on a potential jet ski tournament on Smith Mountain Lake, potentially next year, as well as other tournaments on Phil Pot Lake, where opportunities present themselves.
Ronnie?
I've got a question for you, Kevin, not meaning to be selfish or ugly or anything, but these boats, the weigh-ins and the TV crews, they'll all be set up in Franklin County, not Bedford or Pennsylvania County.
Absolutely.
Okay. I know I had that, so an ugly question and probably some of you is gritting your teeth, but we're going to pay for it, it needs to be done in our county.
We were thinking the same thing.
Absolutely.
The King Cat crew had kind of honed in on Crazy Horse Marina. It's kind of their top choice for a base of operation. So yes.
Kevin, I want to applaud you for this proactive stance on tourism. You know, I have, my whole family fishes, so I'm very biased. Just get that out there. I should be in the video, by the way. Just kidding.
Well, it's in, it's in the Boone District, too.
That's right. That's right, that's right.
It's Franklin County.
Oh, I know that, I know that, of course. We've got three counties that are involved. But my my point is, is this is the type of utilization of our Phil Pot and Smith Mountain Lake that needs to be happening. This is a, these have been missed opportunities in the past. And really what's going on now, as the video articulated, our fishery now is probably in the most optimal position to attract the big tournaments, like the big bass tournaments next weekend. And that will draw thousands of people to Franklin County. And so there is, these opportunities are great. I mean, it just kind of reinforces the need, I know in my district, to get some lodging. So that we're looking from an economic development perspective of how we can be situated and positioned to accept these larger tournaments and other activities that exist within Franklin County. So I thank you for that, and I think this is an exciting event.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Tommy.
The lake presents so much opportunity for us. I don't know why somebody ever thought about a boat race, but we, years and years ago, young farmers had a boat race down there and it did very well, very well, very well. And like I said, it needs to be, you know, more and more of these events on the lake, like the boats race, the fishing tournament, the ski doos. All that stuff needs to be explored, because that will definitely bring money to Franklin County. And before we leave, Kevin, I want to go back to the fair, but I'd go ahead and go through this first.
Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead.
I don't want to repeat what everybody else said, but I think this is a great event. It crosses a lot of Ts, dots a lot of Is in our tourism agenda, and thank you for getting this, Kevin.
Go ahead, Nick.
I like it too. My question might be for Brian, the carryover COVID contingency account, because I saw that get brought up in our books several times this week. Are there certain things we can spend those dollars on?
Mr., I can, I can take that, Mr. Mitchell. It's not obligated, because those are local dollars. So we could, we can essentially spend those dollars on essentially anything, with the point being they're one-time dollars, just because they're carryover. So, you know, one-time event here, it won't repeat necessarily next year. That being said, when we get to look at other carryover dollars next month in the month of October, as well as we get into the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget, Mr. Tosh and I have had conversations about opportunities, budgetary opportunities going forward, to make sure that we've got dollars that we can bid, if you will, on a tournament or things like this. But I hope that answered your question. You essentially can spend it on, it's one-time dollars, but you can spend it on other things.
Well, I guess that kind of brings me to my next point. This is great, Kevin, and I hope this will work great. These COVID dollars have really spoiled a lot of people. I hope we don't, going forward, think we can just keep doing things off COVID dollars that are no longer there.
Yeah, that's excellent point.
All right, you need some action on this, don't you?
I do.
I would like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I would make a motion to approve the requested bid submission to the King Cat Signature Series Tournament Trail in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars from the existing carryover COVID contingency account line item, three zero zero one zero zero four seven dash five nine one two five, and authorize the county administrator and county attorney to execute the contract on the county's behalf.
Same.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion before we take a final vote? Madam Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Ronnie Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundet?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Good job, Kevin Tosh.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm up too. I want to discuss something with.
All right.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I need to ask a question.
Go ahead.
I know the fair this year was in August, that we usually have in September. Did August hurt us? And would you go again with August?
August did not hurt.
And your recommendation?
Absolutely. August did not hurt us. We are weighing a couple of groups that it put a strain on. But again, we're already working now with with our midway company to secure a date for next year. I would say if we stay with the same midway company, which looks like, based on last year, maybe our choice at this point would probably be in August of next year, but that has not been fully decided. But it definitely did not hurt us.
The only complaint I heard was the first wheel. Everybody wanted a first wheel.
So do I.
And I hope whoever you do line back up will have a first wheel. But frankly, as I was at the fair, the volunteers were fantastic, Sheriff's Department fired everybody, U.S. fired everybody. Paul had everybody. I think it is one of the most complete fair I've ever been to. Everybody worked so good together. I just want to thank you and everybody that's involved for what they did. And I'd like to keep it August myself, it looked like I said it was really, really good. So thank you, I appreciate you staying to ask my question.
Mr. Chairman, I would remind the board that Kevin is a department of one, okay? I can promise you that's unprecedented in localities around us and throughout the Commonwealth. And Kevin, you pulled off a lot as a one-man department. I don't think that's sustainable, quite frankly. So I think that for me, your needs are going to be top of mind for me as we look towards our budget priorities next year.
Thank you, Kevin. This time, we'll take about a five-minute break. Jim Gallin, man of the hour.
I don't know about that, but I'm here.
All right.
Hi, Jeff.
How y'all doing today?
We're good.
Fantastic. Hope you are. I am, I am. I'm glad to get this started, because sooner it'll be done. But anyway, I'm here to talk to y'all today about landfill phase three, progress so far, the Scale House project that we did, the update on Scale House. And then let you know the results of our bid for the landfill garage. All right. This right here is a picture of phase three before we started. This is the, this is part of the drone video that we gave to all the bidders, so they could see, you know, what they were, what they were getting into. I just want y'all to have that, so you'd have some perspective as to.
How many acres is that, though?
Sir?
How many acres is that?
That is about fifteen or eighteen.
Fifteen, eighteen acres.
We are working on seven for phase three. And then this is actually three, four, three, four, five and six. That's all of it.
All of that right there?
That right there. That'll be the totality of, once we finish, that'll be the totality of our landfill.
Okay.
So so far, Canala Stone, who is the company we partnered with to complete this project, has moved one hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighteen cubic yards of dirt. And that would fill this building seven times, including the thirty thousand cubic yards of stone and blasted stone and dirt that we had to, we had to come back in and do three more blastings. We have installed so far three hundred and forty-four feet of four hundred and thirty-three feet of underdrained pipe in the landfill. That's, that's what goes under the landfill, and then we put the liner and everything on top of it. That's where the stormwater runs underneath the landfill. And right now, we're on track to finish within the allotted time. We're actually on track to finish about three months early. Our, we started this project May thirtieth. That's when the contracts were signed, and that's when we issued a work order to Canala. And that gave us to February the seventh, because we give them two hundred and forty days to finish the landfill. But we will finish it long before. The only thing holding us up in the totality of it is the availability of the tanks. There's only two places in the world that make these tanks, one's in China, one's in England. We're getting the ones from England, and they're supposed to be here November. We will see. We are preparing for them not to be here on time. I just have some pictures to show you some of the progress. That big equipment up on the hill is Canala Stone. Right here in the medium ground is cell two. And this is actually me missing one of the blasting events. I was trying to rush over and get a video of it, and I missed it. This is, this is where cell two butts up against cell This is, this is where cell two butts up against cell three, and that excavator is actually cleaning the stone away from, from the blasting event. This is, this is one of Canala's large 100-ton dump trucks hauling dirt and stone away from where we blasted. And that's a drill and a big excavator. The drill we use to bore holes for the blasting. And then that's a big nine-yard excavator that Canala brought in, and that's another hit of their big trucks. This was last Friday, and this is a, these are three photos. This starts at, at one side, and they'll, it'll go across. So this is the progress we've made already, or up to this point. There is cell three. In the foreground here, you can see the black pipe. That's the leachate pipe that will carry the leachate from cell three into cell two and pumped up into our tank. And in the, at the top of the picture, you can see where some of the underground pipe has been installed. And then this is actually cell four, five, and six, where we've had, this is where we're storing the dirt that we've dug, dug out. And I brought this back again so you'd have reference. Once again, I felt somebody would ask me if I could go back to that first picture. This is the first picture once again. I have this up here to illustrate a problem that we have. We are, we're having a little issue with what, what's called unsuitable soil. So some of the soil in the landfill will not compact. And it is mainly, this picture looked a lot different when I was out there. It was really sparkly, and it's mainly mica that's causing us the problem. But unfortunately, the sparkly didn't translate through the photo. Right now, we've gone through three different options. One option was concrete stabilization, where you would actually, and you do this a lot in road beds, when you're designing a road. You go through and mix the Portland cement with the dirt, and then wet it down, and then go in and grade it, and it'll compact. The issue was when we ran the models for that, it wasn't even. So we were, it looked like that we would get uneven pockets, which over time, when you're running that 80-ton compactor over it, it's going to sink and tear your liner. And if you tear your liner, you've ruined your, your effectiveness of your landfill. So we, we passed that over. Lobella is still investigating one avenue where they would put a geotech fabric over the bad soil, put stone, and then put another piece of fabric on top of it. It is coming out way too high, because it's, it's, we're, we're looking at maybe two or three foot, feet of stone. So what we're proceeding with and what we're testing on Monday is just bring in good dirt. And we will proceed with that progressively throughout the landfill. We have our engineers that do the testing, working on the soil. They'll work right along with Canala. As they dig it up, they'll test the soil, and they'll say, you need to go this deep. Unfortunately, this is going to eat our contingency. We already ate some of our contingency to do the compactor. This is going to eat the rest of it. I was hoping we'd have it left over so that we could do something else, but I don't think that that's the case. I just want you guys to know that had time before, you know, I don't want to come up and surprise you and say, oh, we had spent all this money. But that's what that looks like.
Jeff, how, what is, do you have a rough percentage of how much of the, of the site is, looks like this with this issue going on?
About half. Lobella estimates four acres at a, as a worst-case scenario.
Okay.
Which would, and we would be replacing about 20,000 cubic yards of earth. Now, there's plus and minus to this. We would replace all this, but we are at a shortage of dirt in the landfill. So this unsuitable soil can be used as cover dirt. So we'll use it. Once we start loading in trash, we'll use it to cover, and it'll work just fine. But it just won't work for the compaction. It's, you're building a foundation. It's like when you build your foundation for your house. It's got to be level, it's got to be steady. So that, that's what we got to make sure of.
So are you just going to haul, I mean, can you scrape it and haul it to an alternative place that, you know, some of those future corners or something, and some of those other cells to, to do the, the backfill on it?
We are just, I went too far. I got ahead of myself. We're just going to put it right there.
Okay, okay.
And, and this photo is not, does not really represent when you go out there. Those mounds of dirt are at least 50-foot high. It's, it's high.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. But you know, there's always, there's always the possibility that we won't have to do four acres. That's why we're doing it progressively. We're just not going to go in and clear it out. We're going to make sure we're not going to do anything we don't need to do. We're, we're moving along. And, and like I said, we have, we have plenty of time. We have plenty of time. As long as we get the liner installed before the weather turns, because you can't install liner after it gets, I believe, colder than 50 degrees at night, it won't cure. So we just got to make sure that we get the liner in before then, but other than that, we'll be fine. All right, if there's no more questions about the landfill, I'll move on to the Scale House.
Okay.
This was a very positive renovation that we did on Scale House. We replaced the roof. We replaced the front door and a new door jam. We replaced the HVAC, and we put all new floor. And this floor worked great. I had my doubts about this luxury vinyl tile, but it is super. It, it, it really did. This, we had anticipated this bid to come between $40,000 and $50,000. That's what me and Don had worked out before he left. When this came in, this came back at $17,727. So we saved a little bit more money because I bought this, I bought the flooring and eliminated the tax, since we were tax-free. So since we were so far under budget, I had the guy go ahead and replace all the windows into place, and he did that for about $4,500. And painted the interior of the building for about 13. So we were all in at $24,000. So we saved 26 over what we had, what we had allotted for this project, which is good, because we need, with this thing with the landfill, we got to save where we can. So now we come to the, the bid results for the garage. And I have, I have the, the winning bid, along with the bid sheet, for everybody. If you, if you want, I'll just hand them out to y'all.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Galden is handing out the bid sheet and low bid and so forth, I just want to thank not only Mr. Galden, but Mr. Sink, Barry Sink specifically, and the staff down at the landfill. And, yeah, I would just add, if, if board members, if you haven't had a chance to get out, you know, to the landfill, or even the public, just to see the operations, the manpower and the capital investment that it takes to operate a municipal landfill is, it's really unreal. And just seeing some of the pictures of the Scale House, those upgrades, it's night and day of what that Scale House was and what it is now. And of course, Mr. Galden is going to walk you through the bid sheet here and the low bid and the recommendation, but I know a few of you have been down to the landfill previously, where we really have not had a garage per se. We've had a building, if you will, but a lot of the guys have had to work out in the open, in the open conditions for years. And so we wanted to make sure when we did this landfill project for the expansion of cell number three, and to borrow those funds, that not only that we repurpose, if you will, repair the Scale House, but also to make sure we have a facility that our employees can be proud of, that can work out of. And so while a lot of the, the work on the landfill project and the borrowing that we did last spring, the board will remember, we secured the good bond rating and the great financing. A key component of this is the, it's the landfill garage, and so I'll let Mr. Galden take it from there, but just wanted to add those comments for the board.
Once again, Don and I started working on this while he was still here, and that was, this was one of the first projects we addressed, because he took me out there and showed me that building, and I was like, oh, my goodness.
That was my response.
Because, you know, what I'd come from the city of Martinsville, we had a very nice, very nice garage. Before I start this, I will say that we have already purchased lifts for the garage. We looked at several different things and several different avenues, and I actually called my fleet manager from Martinsville. I said, what are y'all using? Because I couldn't remember. And they're using the mobile lifts, so we went down there and looked at them. And then Darrell, our head mechanic at the landfill, went out and sourced them. And we bought the best hydraulic lifts that you could get and saved $100,000. If we had bought the, the lifts that you, that you put in the concrete, that you bolt down, it'd been $130,000. We were buying four lifts for $40,000. And they're fantastic. So they've already been using those. They're having to use them outside, but they love the fact that they have them. They sent me a picture the first day. They were so tickled. But, so we already saved a little bit there, and you can see the bid I gave you. We, we had projected between $500,000 and $600,000 for this project. Now, this garage will not be the totality of it, because I have to get three-phase power moved to it, and I, and AEP is going to charge what they're going to charge me. But I'm recommending that we accept the $191,680 from Price for a steel building. This will be equivalent to the building that we have behind the county administration building. It'll be 50-foot by 80-foot with a 20-foot wall, so they'll be able to lift the trucks up 20 feet. The lifts lift seven, the trucks 12 feet, so there's enough room for them to work inside there. This includes the concrete. The only thing that we will have to do after this is the electrical, and I've already been working on that. As you can see, we got, we bid this thing twice. The first time I bid it, I bid just the building, and for some reason, I couldn't get anybody to bid it the way that I had written it, because they all wanted to bid the building and the pad. So I said, all right, let's put it back out. Bid the building and the pad. And Price, I feel like, came back with a very good price, a very good number for us. And we, we probably need to save this money anyway, just in case something else happens on the landfill. As you can see, in the, in the final bid, we had three groups that bid on it. Price put in three bids, three different kinds, tubular steel, post and frame, which is a little bit of the old method of construction. It's concrete triangle with a post in it, and then you build the building around it. And then the steel frame, or the steel building, like what we had back in the back. We had a company from Axton, Moxley Construction, build something called ICF, and it is, it's, it sounds great, it looks great, all the numbers are great, but it's just too expensive for a garage. This is basically forms that you put together, pour concrete in, you stack another, pour concrete in, so you get a concrete wall, and it's great. The R-value is unbelievable. Be great for something like this building or something like that, but it's just too expensive for the garage, $391,000. And then concrete foundations come in. They were very competitive in their price, $249. This is the same type of building that we're going to get from Price, they bid. And the same thing for TAS Design. TAS Design is the company that did the Scale House renovation for us. They're an architectural firm out of Reno, and they were great to work with. But once again, Price beat them by $30,000. So we're going to go with that. The only thing I will say, I spent the afternoon in that building right there, because we pulled the power and everything's out of it. So I was looking around, and what I noticed is around the perimeter of it, about head high, all the insulation is torn up, because that's where they work it. So Price has given us 26 gauge steel liner panels, eight-foot high. I will probably go ahead and include that. So I don't know, should I ask for the, that increase, or just do that as a change order?
What's the contingency?
I've got the money, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And it would be under the 20%, but I just thought since we're here. All right, I've got the figure. So I'm going to ask for $197,590.
Should we just do a do not exceed number, Brian?
$200,000. I can handle that. Well, no, because I don't know how much AEP is going to charge me.
All right, that's, that's what I'm thinking, because we don't know that yet.
$350,000.
Should we do a do not exceed?
Okay. So which one are you going to add?
That total.
All three of these options?
No, just the one.
Just the one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so, okay. So it looks like on the bid, what we're requesting, because there will be other options, other pieces to this project, which will be separate. So for the board's consideration, just to award the bid with option one.
Yes, sir.
Which is to add the steel liner panels that Mr. Galden said, at an additional cost of $5,910, that we're asking the board to award the bid with option one for a total of $197,590 to Price Buildings.
And this will not exceed anyone else's bid, so we will not get in trouble that way.
Correct.
So that takes the electrical piece into consideration?
No, it does not.
It does not?
It does not.
But that would be AEP, from what I understand, so that wouldn't be part of this anyway. That, that we can't bid that since they're the utility. They'd be doing that work.
They are, I mean, yeah, they have.
So it's gone from $191 to $197?
That's the request with the additional option, based on the bid, that I understand.
Additional option of the insulation?
Of the panels.
The panels, okay.
This is to preserve the insulation.
Gotcha.
They're actually coming back. That was one thing that they did better than anybody else. They offered three inches, three inches of insulation. Everybody else offered two. And they're putting gutters on the building that nobody else offered. I was very impressed with their, with their bid.
Good.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Right ahead.
Heat and air for your employees while they're in there working?
We're going to put a waste oil heater. You will see that there are framed openings for two 3x3 gable louvers. I'll put a louver on the bottom and a fan on the top. That, and when the fan turns on, it'll open the louver, so you'll get, I'm, I'm going to pull air in from behind the building, which is back in the woods, and then have it go out. There, you, I couldn't air-condition this building, it's 4,000 square feet.
Yeah, well, I'm just curious about, like, keeping them cool, not necessarily air-conditioning, but like some big fans and stuff like that. So you've taken that into consideration. I want to be comfortable, I want us to do it right the first time, and get them a good building is kind of what I'm looking at, especially if we're, you know, coming in, you know, under budget and stuff like that.
Under budget, yes, sir. I know the guys would love for me to put air in there, but this is what we had in Martinsville, and it worked fine. And, and, and we'll be able to also, this building will have two 16-by-14-foot roll-up doors on the front, one 16-by-14-foot roll-up door on the back, two doors on the side, and then four windows, two on each side. So there'll be ample ventilation on this building.
So if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, one other question. On the exclusions there with the electrical, any grading, and that, what is your funding plan for those things that are not included in the bid?
The, we set aside, once this bid came back, Brian and I set aside $350,000 out of the borrowing.
Okay.
Instead of 600, which is phenomenal. I'm so glad that you finally can get stuff that don't cost a fortune.
That's perfect.
Yeah. But Barry's going to tear it down. He's, he's, Barry, Barry is going to tear it down, so. I asked him if he would teach me how to run the excavator so I could help him, but we'll see. The old building, are we going to repurpose it? We're going to take it, if we can get it off, we're going to take the tin and sell it. Uh, and we're going to try to save the post inside of it. But that old building right there is in really bad shape. This is, though...
Can't be repurposed?
No, sir.
Can't use the shelter or stores?
No, sir, this is where the new building is going.
Oh.
Yeah, and, and we also, I'm sorry, I should have, uh, made that clear, uh, to start with. We looked at all kinds of different options down there as to where, you know, maybe we could put it and then keep this old building, keep tires or something in it. But this is the only place. Uh, when you're building a fifty by eighty, four thousand square foot building, there's only so many places it's going to go. And we are also limited because, alright, directly behind this is the well for the pumping tree. Over here are some monitoring wells. Over here, on the other side of this garage, is gas wells. So we're, we're sort of stuck as where we can put it.
How, how fast is this building going to be torn down?
Well, Price wants to move on, so it's, it's...
Well, the point I'm trying to drive at is that could we put it out for bids if anybody wants to buy and tear it down?
I guess we could. Uh, you mean for the scrap, for the scrap?
Well, for all the metal and everything that's in it, people are looking for deals.
Yeah.
And so if, if we got to use our own people and our own machine to tear it down, then we putting that much more money into it. Now, if we got to have it moved quick, I can understand what you're doing.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, you take that roll-up door right there, there's no telling what it's worth.
I'm going to have them take that door off if we can save it. Because we just had to replace the door on the other building, it was four thousand dollars. So if we can save that door, I'm going to save it. But Mr. Cundiff, that's a good idea. Um, and we can put it out for ten days, you know, and I'll put some pictures with it and see if anybody wants to come in and tear it down for the scrap. Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. And I'll, uh, once we get this done, I'll set a meeting with Price and we'll... The only thing, we want to make sure that we get this, uh, moving quick enough that we can pour that concrete before it gets too cold.
Right.
That's going to be the only issue. Well, and then working within Price's schedule. I don't want to make them mad because they give us good, good numbers.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
To, just from what knowledge I have on this matter, it'll take Barry about two hours.
Yeah.
To assemble, disassemble that building.
Yeah.
And the only thing it, any worth is the metal, what you just said that you guys would sell. In my opinion, putting out the bid is just going to delay something that your people desperately need. And I think the plan that you have in place with Barry, I think you should move forward with and get your new building started. I don't think we should waste time on putting out the bid because then you got to coordinate people coming in to county property to disassemble a building, which I, I've heard this board several times say, oh, there's a liability here, liability here, liability here. We just had to deal with it with James River out at the business park. I, I think it's a terrible idea to solicit bids to have someone else come in and tear it down. I think Barry and your staff is more than capable of moving forward with this and getting your new building up.
Barry can definitely tear it down. And it will not cost us anything to dispose of the materials.
Well, just the, just the cost of going to bid, I mean, that, that is, that costs just on its own. Correct, Mr. Willoughby?
I'm sorry, say again.
I said, it, it's going to cost the county money just to put out a bid.
It, it does, from a staff standpoint, yes.
That's right.
How long did Barry say it'd take him to tear it down?
Barry thinks it's going to take him two days because he's going to try to preserve that, uh, and I will say this, we're shorthanded. We are, we are critically shorthanded. So I don't think that this building will get torn down as quick as Price would want us to. However, I'm not sure if we put it out to bid, if we, there, there are issues there. Because I, I don't, the liability thing is not a big deal because Price is going to come and work on the landfill. I mean, it's, you know, it's six of one. But once you put it out to bid and accept a bid, you're sort of at the mercy of the person that you, you know, give the bid to. Uh, they can take their time or, you know, whatever they want to do. We can talk about that further. I, uh, I just need to go ahead and get the process started.
You need a motion for us to approve.
To buy the building, yes, sir. Uh, I do.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion. I just need to get that, that amount, one ninety-seven, what's the balance?
One ninety-seven, five ninety.
One ninety-seven, five ninety. So we're going to award the, uh, bid to Price and authorize.
Not to exceed.
Is it, it's not a not to exceed number, right?
No.
No.
That's the cost.
That's the cost. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I would offer the motion, um, to award the landfill garage bid, uh, construction of new garage structure and associated improvements to Park, excuse me, to Price Building, Inc., in the amount of one hundred ninety-seven thousand doll, one hundred ninety-seven, five hundred and ninety dollars, correct? Did I have that right? Um, to, and it's, uh, concrete pad, electrical and heating unit installation, purchase of new hydraulic lifts, et cetera. There, thereby authorizing public work staff to enter into an associated contract to complete the work as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
One second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any further discussion before we take a final vote?
The only thing I want to discuss is that I think we're all just county citizens. You can set stipulations, you can do anything you want to when you put something out for bid. Once they put it out for bid, you say you got ten days to tear it down, or you got five days to tear it down. I still say that it should be put out for bids. Because like I said, we putting that stipulations on it, it'll either move fast or y'all tear it down.
Mr. Chairman, I need just to, um, clarify some language in the motion if I may. Um, just that the motion, um, includes the addition of option one on, on the sheet for the twenty-six gallon steel liner panels, uh, to eight feet at a cost of five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. And with the base price being one ninety-one, six eighty.
Gauge, twenty-six gauge.
Hmm?
Gauge, yeah.
Oh, twenty-six gauge, okay, that's cool. I said gallon, didn't I?
Any other discussion?
Gallon, gauge.
Madam Kirk, you take a roll call, please.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I went over last week and took a ride around with Barry Sinkin and the boys. And, uh, they, that is some major work that's going on. And I've heard several people make comments to Paul Chapman and to, uh, about Kevin Tosh and talking about what they need. And that landfill is out of sight and out of mind, except for me, if you notice in the back of several of the back of your pictures, it's my house. It's not out of sight and out of mind to me. And they need, um, they need some, some stuff thrown their way. They've got a big, and we're fortunate to have that landfill and not a transfer station. And they need some attention thrown their way. Um, this is good what they're getting, but Barry was showing me the mica and the stuff not packing and, uh... Like you said, you can use a daily cover, but they're having to hollow it up on top of the hill and bring in good dirt, and it's a problem. And, um, they need our attention as well.
Yeah, because I, I was really looking forward to having that contingency left over. But it is not, it's not going to happen.
And tearing that building down will make Barry happy, let him do it.
That's what I'll say.
Because we don't want him to retire.
We can't afford to... We definitely do.
We can't, kid.
We do not want Barry to retire.
No, we do not.
We can't afford for Barry to retire.
Barry is a prize of great price.
Alright, we're going to take a break.
Good work, Jim.
Reconvene back at B seventy-five. Before you leave, I passed out a manila envelope for all the board members. If you will, uh, take those home with you, go over it, make your, uh, changes to it and get those back to Connie as soon as you can so that I can compile that information. And, uh, then we'll sit down and discuss it all, but, uh, thank you.
For the work of Spectrum Designs, along with various, uh, department heads, constitutional officers are developing a facilities master plan. Um, and this type of plan really is intended to be a long-term, uh, planning tool for us. Uh, hopefully it'll provide information, kind of cost and stuff that will allow us to make informed decisions as we move forward with a lot of our capital investments. So today we have, again, Chris Venepel and Norwayce from Spectrum. They're going to present some updated findings and recommendations from that study. Uh, we had them here in June, uh, we've kind of fine tuned some of that, uh, and so they're going to come back with some updated information for you all. Um, the ranking of these projects, um, is the main area where we're going to need your feedback. So we're going to kind of do an overview of the plan, uh, run through, um, some cost estimates. And then you guys will see the two immediate needs that we have identified in a little more detail. Um, the estimates for the projects, they are at a very high level right now. So if you see a number that's bigger than you think, uh, we're having to make a lot of assumptions at this point. And it's just based off of interest, industry rates right now. So, uh, once we receive your feedback, we're going to take the facilities master plan, we'll do some revisions to that. And we'll get a final document back to you guys, um, so that you can approve that. So, uh, with that, I will pass it over to Chris Venepel.
Well, thank you all for, for having us back today. So this first part is basically going to be just a real quick summary. And you guys saw this last time in a little bit more detail. Um, ours, we're going to focus more on the estimates and the immediate needs than, than kind of the overview of the buildings. But, um, we're, we're going to restate the purpose of the facility master plan, go through the facilities that we looked at. Uh, and then look at the priorities and estimated costs for, for each of these, uh, each of these, um, facilities. And then, uh, we've got four plans of the ones that have an immediate need. So the purpose of the master plan was to provide a space needs analysis of, of all the identified facilities. Look at growth numbers and how the buildings were being used, how the space was being used. Also look at the physical condition of the space, uh, whether or not, you know, it was in good condition, poor condition. Uh, if it needed upgrades, uh, for ADA accessibility, if it had, um, you know, if it needed asbestos to be with or all of those types of things. And then we, uh, met with each, uh, each department and programmed their needs, both current and, uh, their staffing needs into the future. And then we, we've set it aside with immediate, short-term, medium-term, and long-term needs. Uh, the, these were the departments that we, uh, that were interviewed. I think, I think you guys, we went through this last time, I, I don't think there are any surprises here. Uh, but basically it was everyone in the courthouse, the, uh, the sheriff's department, public safety, uh, DSS. And, uh, then the, and the library here in Rocky Mount. And then at Westlake, we had public safety, the sheriff's office, and the li, the library there. And then we also went through the animal control facility, um, here in Rocky Mount. And then, um, then this, this is the same, and then, okay, so, fast.
A brief look at these buildings. So the public safety is, is right here, uh, not far from this facility. Uh, it's a building that y'all are renting, and there's a question of how long it's going to be available. But it really is a very small building, but there's not room to expand. They really don't have, have the space for what they're doing there, especially reverse operations center, which is that lower right photograph. It's a small room, it's, you know, much smaller than this room, and those workstations are, are tiny. You know, so it, it really does not function well for what needs to happen in that sort of, uh, emergency reaction mode they're in. They don't have all the store space, so it really does have many physical and programmatic deficiencies. And with the house building no longer being available, uh, it starts to rise to, uh, to the top of, when we look at smaller offices. Uh, next was the, uh, search services building, which was originally the library, built in eighteen ninety-six. Uh, as far as a, like, structure and a shell, it's a good size and it's, it's a decent shell. Inside the building, the, the finishes, the mechanical system, electrical are all really beyond their useful life. There's some issues with that. As, uh, DSS is using it now, there's some real security, uh, upgrades that should be done. The, the idea of having the public come only so far in the building rather than kind of having full access, uh, is being addressed somewhat now, but it will be done better, we recommend, as well as in the future. So it's, those things we mentioned, uh, are in there. It, it could be expanded upon or another department could use it and just renovate it to their needs.
They have, uh, they have just about, just over fifty percent of the space that they, that programmatically that they need.
And look at the sheriff's building, uh, as you've learned, uh, the history, it originally had many more county functions in it. And a little, uh, sheriff has grown and taken a lot of it, and now they know our longer house space. There's some physical barriers that make it difficult to expand. You know, if, say, one department needs a couple more offices, well, they're pinned in between structure, a stair, and elevator shaft. And it's a difficult building just to, uh, add a few things to. Uh, we think it's, it is one that is a long-term building and you can do things with it. And we will be recommending some, uh, more renovations and possibly some issues with that. Some things have been around for years, you have the accessibility questions, uh, still remain. There's some, uh, materials that should be available whenever a renovation does occur. Uh, but that's something that I think is understood and can be done easily after a renovation. And then with the library right in Rocky Mount, uh, that, uh, is in good condition. I think the main item they said they would like to have and couldn't have there is some outdoor space. But really, aside from that, they have a good amount of space, it's functioning well, it's in good condition. So we see that as really serving them well into the future.
And then the sheriff's office and, um, in, um, Westlake, it is, um, it is a leased facility. It's functional for what, um, for what they're using it for. Uh, but more, um, more extensive type operations. And if that population continues to grow in, in Westlake, it may, you, you at may, at one point may need to increase your presence there. Uh, and also you, and you may want to get out of the, the leased facility. Uh, the, the public safety in Westlake, you have a small two apparatus bay, uh, uh, two apparatus bay building. And then you also, you do have bunk, bunkers. You've got enough space, it's not particularly well configured. It's also a leased space. And probably the, the biggest hindrance is that the bunk rooms and the people are across the parking lot from the apparatus bay. So if it, in an emergency, that, that adds, you know, that adds valuable time to, to working, uh, in an emergency.
So it really is, it's a office space in an office building that's being used by public safety, but it's really not ideal configuration.
And then the library, it's about two thousand square feet less than, um, programmatically they would like. It's also in a leased space and a ship, and a strip mall. It has no outdoor space, uh, and that, that's a challenge particularly for Westlake simply because they have so many children, particularly in the summer, that they like to do outdoor program, programming for children. And they can't do it in this, in this building. Then the courthouse, um, I was laughing with Chris earlier, uh, that it's kind of reminds me of that Johnny Cash song with all of those, all of those years. One piece of the time, so. But anyway, um, so the court, the existing courthouse, uh, the original building was constructed in nineteen oh nine. And it has had, the latest renovation was in two thousand fourteen. Uh, it has over fifty thousand square feet. However, it is hard to navigate. Uh, there's, there's, it could use some enhanced security and security, there's some security concerns uh, where, you know, the prisoners may cross paths with, with, uh, the public and, and that type of thing. And, um, most of the, most of the, uh, programs that are located in the courthouse are, need to grow. And they have no room to grow in the, in the current, in the current space. And then finally, we've got the animal shelter, which is a new purpose-built facility. And, uh, it's in good shape. The, uh, the only things that, and it, there is room to expand on the site if, if we're to need to grow in the... if, if we need to grow in the future. The only things that they mentioned that they may need going forward is they would like to have like an outdoor space, dog run, and maybe additional storage for food, supplies, donations, that type of thing. Then the next part is the estimates, what we are proposing, short-term, middle-term, and long-term. And so, Chris. Oh, that's a very good idea, Randy.
It's kind of hard to read on the screen.
I made it bigger, too, because the first one is really teeny tiny.
It's hard to do that. We wanted to wait and hand it out so you guys don't focus on the numbers to share.
And the dark green ones at the top are the ones that they're proposing to do as soon as possible.
And both of those being connected with the administrative function and the EOC function with public safety. If the building were to sell, you may be on a short notice to relocate. And we're trying to see what would be an easy, easy move. For longer-term potential, you could have a new public safety building. That's a longer-term project. So we were looking at what was available, and we see at Franklin Center at the lower level, there's really a couple classrooms now that are not used that often. They're further back, kind of, kind of back underground portion. The classrooms that are closer with the window view out are used more frequently, and those could remain. We have drawings that shows that we see, imagine you could turn one of those classroom spaces into an open office with office systems furniture, your cubicles in there for support staff, and then the other one could be supplied into four private offices. There's, and then that whole short corridor at the rear could have a, a door added with access control to secure that space. And that would be fairly easy to do. Only 3700 square feet, it's pretty small, and, you know, looking at fairly low cost for development for that. And the other one being the EOC, you've got a space in this building that we identified as a potential for that. And that's really is a matter of moving in some systems furniture, some data and power type things, but not a, not a big outfit for that need. So that's also a fairly small development cost, around $6,000 for the project.
Well, we initially had looked, back in June, when we had looked at the public, the putting public safety into the Franklin Center, we were stymied because of the amount of square footage that public safety needs going forward. But then, when we met with them more recently, they really are just looking for a place for the administrative function. And for the time, you know, for the time being, until you get to the point where you could, you might build another, you know, a dedicated public safety building, until that point, their bunk rooms and et cetera could be shared with the, with the fire, the fire stations and moved around as, as needed. So they really just needed their admin function. And then they also looked at a classroom that they could use for training that could also be used by other people when they weren't using it. So it was, Franklin Center would be able to maintain their most-used classroom in the basement.
I'll tell you that one more second because we have the numbers. The next group, then sheltering need in five years is the sheriff's office. And E911 has outdoor spaces there. We detailed that more through their programming there. And that also might be an opportunity for, if they were to move out of the space they're in, then the sheriff's department could take over that space for, control some other things that they have, you know, need for. So we have a couple of ways of looking at that. 911 could relocate to the search services building, and we could use the storage for search services, do an interior renovation without expanding it, and they would be adjacent on the same parking lot in a separate building. Now, the other option, there's option two, is that we could construct a building for E911. It could be attached to the view building. There's an extension office that really is a house there. Now, on the side of the building, there are also utilities, crossing, electricals coming down that we have seen. And our thought is the building could be cleared of that and just have a light connection, like an enclosed corridor going back to the view building. That was the...
Maybe it just can't be depending on what program set up, why.
So that was, that went for sheriff. Next, search services. If they were to stay where they are, they could renovate the entire buildings and add, in addition, to get them up to 16,000 square feet programmatically. So that'd be 60,000, 70,000 square foot addition. What we could see is it's a secret storage building, but the site drops to the right, and there's a, a long exterior stair on that side. So you could do a two-story addition on the right. It would be the main level and a lower level. You could enter the lower level, and that would make it accessible. That would give them everything they need under one roof with that option. And another option would be to find a existing building, probably somewhere close to Rocky Mount, where it's kind of close to the main roads and the populations being served, and find something that currently was, you know, 16, 17,000 square feet available, and just building it out to suit the need. As we ran the numbers, those two came very close to each other. So they're both in this six million project cost. Really not a whole lot of difference there. It may be a matter of, are there, is there a good candidate building available? Could you look at the second option? If not, then you could stick around and expand.
And the, with J and D courts, there's some kind of short-term type of things that, that we could look at to just kind of, kind of move that down. The, move the ball down the, down the field without wholesale replacement or renovations. We've looked at, can I ask it?
Yeah. I was pretty shaky.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was helping just, yeah, I was moving my glasses around. Yeah. So in the court service, the easy fixes for the court services in particular is that they need, they need a place where they can do drug testing. Right now, they share a public, a public restroom with, with the public, so it's kind of hard to do drug testing on occasion and that type of thing. It's also off the main public order. And then also, and then the other challenge that court services also has is that that's where, if you were to take out a restraining order against someone, that's where you would go to fill it out. And there's no, there's no place to put them when someone's doing that now. So, one, one fix that we discussed with them was the taking, that if we could relocate the bailiffs area, because it's not really large enough to serve all the bailiffs anyway. If we could kind of take over the small space they have there in the lobby, you could take their restroom and convert it into a drug testing restroom. And you could also have a private waiting area for people that need to fill out forms that they're not in the main, in the main public lobby. Then they have kind of minor needs of adding glass lights to their, to their existing doors so that they can see who's coming, and, you know, it's just more of a security feature. Court docket board, and then intercom to the J and D courts above. And then, going back to the sheriff, the public safety and sheriff's office in Westlake, ideally, you would eventually move out of the two leased spaces and build a combined purpose-built facility for Westlake that would address both your public safety and your sheriff department needs. And then it would also allow room for expansion if, if it needed to down the road as, as the Smith Mountain Lake area continues to grow. And then the second, there's some small, going back to JD. I should have gone through all of J and D and then jumped back. But anyway, going back to the J and D court on the second level, there's, there's some, and I think this one, Randy, is actually, I think the separated waiting rooms is kind of underway.
Yes, we did that with some money that you guys called, were generous enough to give me last year. So now we do at least have two waiting rooms, or we can separate parties that are in court.
Yeah. And they had also requested changing the furniture to benches that are... And that, we were, we were talking about that earlier. And, but there's several reasons behind that. First off, you know, with juvenile domestic situations, it can sometimes get a little more heated. There's a lot more of emotions, emotions on the line, that type of thing. It's much harder to throw a bench. It also can accommodate, you know, different sized people. And when you have people, when you have children, elderly, and there's all kinds of mix in the juvenile domestic courts, and the benches will give you more options there. Add CCTV so that the bailiff can observe the holding cells, et cetera, from the courtroom, and just, just some general, general security upgrades in that courtroom. And then, the short-term, in the next four, three spaces, which would be all of the J and D court clerk, the circuit court clerk, say this, if I'm not mistaken, and the general district clerk, court clerk. Anyway, that's basically just furniture replacement. They, they all indicated that it would work better for them if they had different furniture, cubicles that would allow expansion, give them better sound protection. Particularly J and D and the general district, they're just on furniture now and not cubicles. And this would, and the, and the cost reflected here also includes data and power and that type of thing. And then, also, short-term, within five years would be the creation of a dedicated bailiffs area. And I would foresee that happening in the same time that you address the J and D court services, ideally, so that when they lose the very small spot that they have, they have a larger dedicated area with, they currently have no restrooms or break area or anything in the courthouse. So they are asking to, they sometimes use the general district conference room or use the restrooms there. Otherwise, they have to use the public restrooms, except for the, there's one in the lobby, but that's a long way from most of the courtrooms and where they're located. And then, the sheriff's office at Westlake would likely go into the, with the public safety. You want to take me there?
And then, for Westlake, we look at a program for a 5,000 square foot library. That could be a new library on a new site. And there may be some county-owned property that might be a good candidate for that. Pretty close to the same location that's in now. That would be new construction. We have a project policy that being 3.9 million, construction being 3.3. That includes site development, and some outdoor space and parking for them. So, the next one, the, the new public safety building would be taking those programs we've mentioned before, where the public safety admin plus the EOC, and some of these other positions that they would, in short-term, locate some of their stations, which would be in location and with some quarters, because when they are in the emergency operations, you know, they need a place for, just leave to shower, to, to change, and that sort of thing. So that would be, that would replace the shorter-term move into this building and Franklin Center potentially with a permanent purpose-built public safety building in the long term, 50, 50 years out, 50 years out. Let's see, next is the bigger renovations at the view building. That would be really resetting that to accommodate the growth in the different departments and staffing that they have some immediate need for already, but certainly they're anticipating a growth five years out, 10 years out, would, would welcome that additional space. When we would reconfigure, or even design, would reconfigure the spaces, we could address the accessibility issues. We could address some of those house materials that were listed in the 60s when you, you know, sit down a floor and rebuild it.
And you would have a room, by moving E911, you then would have the expansion room for investigations and some of the other departmental growth that they're looking at.
So, in the courts building, similar question, that if every department is full, how do you expand them all if they're just not, you know, space? If the common law's attorney were to move to either a new building, it could be a leased building, it could be a new standalone building. If we were to build a new J and D courts building, they could be located there potentially. That would free up room within the courts building, so...
Of course, if J and D moves, then they'll have enough room to do things.
So, a few of these options, if you get a one path, you may not go down the other. We could see a common law's attorney move to a location near the courthouse, but not necessarily in the courthouse. And that does the 1.4 million for Thursday. Let's see, we, moving the history room to the courthouse, so it would be close to some of the archives and records that the district court, circuit court is responsible for. It's something that was discussed. So that's a, a fair amount of small interior renovation to make that space there. And some of the items the library is holding could be located in that, and it would be a one-point location for local history, genealogy, and some other research that many people do. And then, finally...
We have space in the library and to add the classroom and large meeting room that they have requested. And they've, they've got some shooting around going on currently anyway, but they're, they're moving away from the DVDs, and that's freeing up some space. So if they were to take their history and move it in where, because right now, anybody who does a lot of research, genealogy, that type of thing, they end up typically going both to the library and the courthouse and kind of this back and forth. So there was one depository for all of that information in Franklin, in Franklin County. And the courthouse seems to make sense because it's historic and already has all the, all the things that can't leave and need to be involved.
So for the long-term items, option one is creating a new J and D courts building, because they really cannot expand anymore where they are. And for the long-term, now free of space in the existing courts building for departments to grow. And there's some potential locations right at the same complex. There's a little parking lot that might make a good building pad location. But that could accommodate J and D with their current needs and future needs. And that could be a standalone. And that, you see that quite often where J and D is in a standalone court facility. There's maybe more privacy and sensitivity. It could be accommodated there, and less, less public access to J and D. And so, a new, new building at 14,000 square feet is 6.4 million construction, 7.5 total project. If that were to occur, I'm going to jump down to the end. The option 1A, you potentially re-renovate the entire court facility after J and D leaves, and it would do maybe floor by floor, or you have some swing space at that point where you could reconfigure the things so the current functions can operate. Finish the first floor, they occupy that, and work on the second floor, and work your way up and out. So this is the existing square footage of the courts building at 5,000 square feet. Any full renovation that would make it a court facility functioning as a modern court facility should. The things we mentioned about the paths of the public versus the paths of the staff and the paths of the prisoner under supervision should not cross until they eat in the courtroom. And that can be worked into a new plan if you really were to kind of cut the floor plates out and rebuild them. And some of those circulation issues that are a little bit of a maze right now, because it was built over one piece and another piece and another piece, you could make a little more sensible plan, have a little more straightforward circulation of public here, of staff here, and that security could be built into the new design. So, you could do option one in 1A, and you're done with courts. Or option two would be just build a new purpose-built court facility, probably about 60,000 square feet. And that is really looking at some similar size courts buildings that have been built recently, and what we believe the market is saying that the cost of those are, that would be about a 28 and a half construction cost, total project of 34.
And you can see that it's not, there's not that much difference between a Brandy building and renovating and building, smaller building. However, one thing that we do think would be possible, particularly with the, with the existing courthouses, that you could utilize historic tax credits. And because it's so chopped up inside, you're really only looking at keeping the ceremonial courtroom and the exterior. And so, most of the interior could be guided to accommodate what, what, what a nor, a, a modern courts building would do. And then, that would take that, you know, that 22 million, you could take about 40% off of that. So then, that, that begins perhaps to look more attractive as an option to do that instead of a Brandy courts building.
There's certainly a few humps to jump through, hoops to jump through on a Department of State Resources approval. But with the original, you know, 406 building, that is the piece that they would want to see really preserved and be a showcase. And I believe the qualifying expenses with tax credits might yield, you know, six to seven million back. So your total cost could be reduced, close to, close to 14.
This is just a floor plan looking at the basement of the Franklin Center and what we could do with the public safety admin. As I mentioned, the, the training room would stay as it is, it could still be shared with everyone else, as would the conference room, but then, public safety could use it if they needed it. And then, we would add, basically, just a door, like a glass door with a side light at the, at the end of the corridor. And so then you could, could have a public safety suite with the reception function and added function occurring, where she would have sight through both of the glass doors. And then, the chief's office being right there as she would walk in, and then the other three offices. Then there's a small, a small kind of break area that would could have a refrigerator, microwave, coffee pot, that type of thing. So it, it lays out fairly efficiently, and all of, all of the walls are there, except for the office walls and the wall off the corridor to create the suite. And then, this was looking at the, at this building here, and this is currently the reassessment office. And this is looking at doing the emergency operations center in that office. And we can get the same number of spaces and also have a backup redundancy for E911 there, and have two consoles for that. And then, you know, relocate your EOC to here. And this is not adding any walls, you're really just looking at furniture, paint, you know, additional electrical and data. You would not need to, you know, change the ceiling out or your HVAC or anything. There would be some HVAC and electrical changes in the Franklin Center, simply because right now it's one open room, and you create three little offices. We would have to rework the mechanical electrical there.
Real quick, I just wanted to say, as we dive back in this recommendation summary, we're by no means saying that all these projects have to be done. After meeting with our departments, these are the needs that were, that came to light, basically. And we just want to kind of give you an idea of where we might be if we choose to go with some of these projects. Not everything that's listed as short-term would necessarily be short-term. We understand that is, is based on funding that's available for these projects. But really, we just want to get a feel, are you guys in agreement with our immediate needs? Are there other needs that you feel like maybe would be addressed quicker? Given the cost of some of this stuff, do you want us to stay in the lease spaces? So like I said, it's a very, it's a long-term plan, we're looking at 20 years, not anything that's going to happen immediately. So we're definitely open for your feedback as to what you feel are the priorities moving forward.
What I've seen and recognized, for me, our immediate needs of public safety right now, because, one, we don't know how long they're going to be able to stay where they're at, but you know, if that's building too, it will be an option. But it's really just small, what they need. I think we need for immediate needs, we need to address public safety of what, you know, the space that they need. Just looking, I think that utilizing the Franklin Center and out here is probably a good Band-Aid for short-term decks. But I don't think it's necessarily a long-term solution. But I think, you know, it may buy us some time to, to do something else. My other that I recognize as being an immediate need is our 911 center. I think that building, when it was built where they're located now, it was built back in the early nineties, and it was built to last possibly 10 years. And so that tells you about where we're at. You know, when those ladies working there, and they're standing for 12 hours at a time, working on top of each other. And that, 911 center, whether we want to admit it or not, that is the nucleus of this whole town. When someone calls, need a fire truck, an ambulance, a police officer, or basically any other service, it's going to go through that, that 911 center. And I'm amazed at the work they're able to get done, you know, tight spaces. So I think for me, the, the public safety needs and the needs for our 911 center are at the top. The rest of those, I, I looked at, the rest, they would all be nice, but for me, they're not immediate needs. But that, that's where I'm at, but thanks for the presentation. Anyone else have any questions, with Nick?
Not a question, but I agree on the public safety thing. The Franklin Center is a pretty good idea, but it would be a temporary, temporary fix. I don't know enough about the courthouse, I don't spend any time in there. And I will say, as far as the review on these leased properties, such as the sheriff's office in Westlake and the library in Westlake, I, I, I don't see the need for them anywhere. So that would be ideal. I think the lease is outrageous on them. But I just.
Did I say, you know, what?
I agree with everything Tim and Nick said, that that's exactly my priority, is we've got to do something with public safety first, and 911 center second. And I agree with Nick, these leases, we've got to get out of these leases.
Yeah, I'll address the Westlake progress first, I do have a question. Nick, are you talking about the elimination of those things, or just that we need to be in a built facility?
If we can find a cheaper way of it, I'm fine to listen to that, but as far, I don't, I don't think that that sheriff's office building serves a purpose being there.
Well, I can't, I, I can't speak to that, but, you know, I get concerned when we start, you know, talking about the library especially. And I know the EMS presence there, you know, is important. And I know after talking with, you know, with Deputy Chief Ludeman and all, there's a lot of concern that exists in public safety today.
Well, I didn't bring up public safety, I just.
No, I, I'm talking about that facility, about Westlake, and the inadequate coverage that they feel that exists there with all the growth in the area. So, I'm just suggesting that there's a lot more to talk about there than just doing something completely different. I think, I don't like leases either. I mean, you know, we're just, we don't own it, and that's a problem. So I think we can do better there. But in terms of the actual services, that's a different conversation. One question I do have, when you were working with DSS, did they, was your analysis with DSS, did they bring up the fact they've got a lot of their case management staff and all now walking from home?
They did.
Did that impact the numbers any?
We did not include the, like, the, the numbers were not saying everybody, you know, everybody's coming back to the office.
Okay, okay.
They're just growing so much, the need for social services in general is growing. You know, I think, I'm trying to remember the program now, but I think, you know, the case, the case management section, what we had proposed to them is very similar to what we've done with some other, like, community service boards for, for, like, P9 and New River and things like that. Where case management, you have like a series of like six to eight cubicles, which are not dedicated, you know, because they're, they are not, they're going into people's homes, they're doing, you know, they're working out of their homes some, they're going into people's homes, they're in, in, in the field. So, it's basically a place where they can put, you know, plug in their laptop, check their mail, make a few phone calls, that type of thing. But we did not give dedicated spaces to all the.
Okay, thank you.
All these lease properties that we currently have, if we look at them and look at the amount and the pay amount, it would go along the ways towards the debt service, some bill of the nice.
I agree.
And, and we would own it.
I agree.
I, the immediate need is needed for public safety. And whichever one goes to the area, be it this building or Franklin Center, is where we need to go. Whichever one is the best option. I'm going to be completely opposed to tearing down these buildings, especially our courthouse, just to get a new building, a new roof. Because I like the character of the courthouse. We've got one of the few buildings in this Commonwealth, Virginia, that's original, and it's, it adds to the charm of the community. You know, other people don't, they want to do, that's my opinion, or whatever, that's what, that's what we need to keep what we got. Now, as far as owning or renting the library and the sheriff's office, public safety, we already talked about this in a prior meeting, three or four meetings ago. I don't even know if the building is still for sale, I rode by there the other day, but I didn't look at it. That's the old Gilbert and Byrd law firm. That, that could be bought and renovated and fixed up.
I think somebody's in there, I think I saw a different sign there.
But it's still for sale, I know it's a different sign.
Okay, I don't know.
I stated probably ago that I didn't know if it was still for sale. Gilbert and Byrd is gone. Gilbert's got an office in Roanoke, and Byrd's got a new office down at Bridge. It was, that building, at the time, I thought you even made the motion, and I seconded to look into it, but it's bought. I'm pretty sure we did, if we go back and look at the minutes, I know that was there.
We toured the building, and as of, at least a couple of weeks ago, there was still a for-sale sign out there. I don't know if we'd be interested in the asking price on that right now, the renovation is going to be expensive. Also depending on what we would like to put in there.
What do you think it would be that would make it so expensive?
The configuration of it now would lend itself, like, if we try to put the library in there, we're going to have to cut the building, it needs a new roof, it needs to be checked.
I think, I think the important thing here, instead of saying that it don't work, is to see what we can do to make it work. Because you can put the library upstairs, and public safety downstairs, and take care of the whole thing at one suite.
How big a building is it?
I'd have to pull up the square footage on it again.
It's, it's, and it's more, it's, it's a couple of, three or four acres there for expansion. You go out to the side right there and put a building up, a fire, and rescue the house, the equipment, and they could live right there in the building right beside it. And the sheriff's office could be in front of it, and they could have the back, it's all, it's all done there. But I think, I think, you know, what is it now, $5 for a cup of coffee at Starbucks, $7 at a rent receipt? Get you a cup of coffee at Starbucks, you know, a rent receipt's no good. And that's, that's how we can do it. And the immediate need, I think, is public safety, and that needs to be addressed, whether it's in this building or in the Franklin Center, whichever one is best suited for that for the time being.
Yeah, you really can't, I mean, just to, just to clarify something. Public, public safety, the, the amount of square footage needed long-term for Rocky, Rocky Mount area is in the, I'm trying to remember, 7,000 range. And so, we don't have enough square footage in either place, but it would be a good Band-Aid to put the EOC here and the admin, administration for public safety in the Franklin Center. That, that way, it's not dire if they sell the building tomorrow, you know, you have a place for all.
It's an interim step.
It's an interim step, so that gives you time to plan and.
We could go into public safety here, we could put public safety right here for the immediate need. And we've got land in the back to add on to this building to take care of what the advancement needs to get.
The building you're talking about down there, it's 1.2 billion, that's 2.12 acres.
I think, Brandy, what you're saying is your evaluation of that building just preliminarily suggests extensive interior renovation.
Yes, especially if we're going to put two very different departments in that building.
We would need base and all.
Yeah, I don't even know what square footage of the library would fit on the top floor. But, I mean, it's obviously something we can dig into a little bit more, we would have to add some type of coverage structure in the back for apparatus, and that type of stuff.
Is that Winn-Dixie building down there for sale? Or they want to sell the whole shopping center?
We could identify that, when we were looking at real estate, but I don't know that it's on the market right now.
Well, I know.
Looks like parts of it are on the market.
Huh? Is somebody buying it? I heard Dick tell us.
George Asenaborean, I think, bought the whole complex.
Who, who you think?
I think George Asenaborean bought it.
I know that Ollies was looking at that at one time.
I've heard some rumor mill about that, but I need to call George and find out what's going on there. But there's, there's some days setting up shop in there, looks fairly permanent. Now, the big building, the, the Food Line building, I don't know.
But anyway, we've got to address that, if we want to put public safety here, I mean, the, the need for tax office, you know, that's only two or three, two or three months out of the year. We could put that in here if we had to. Of course, we can hold that being still out there in our boardroom. But, and we've got room to add on by here to the back. How much land we got for this building?
I'd say about 17 acres, it's whole, you know, partial in the back.
Is any of that in the back, in the flood, flood zone?
A portion, a portion of it is.
How much of that's in the flood?
Good portion.
I can confirm that, we looked at it a couple of weeks ago, just looking at drainage, and if there's going to be any way for us to construct something back there with as much as it dips down, and how the water drainage is set up currently.
It wouldn't be, the only thing you'd have to add back there is a parking lot there, because you could add on here and move the parking lot back there. Come to flood, people got to get their cars out.
Yeah, but once you start disturbing and you've got stormwater rigs, and you've got.
That's what we bought that building for down there, it's a whole incident, all that land spent. Move that down there.
Move what down there?
Our flood plain, what we disturbed, that's what we got that parking for.
For me, Mr. Chairman, the 911 center, for me, is the priority right now. We can put public safety admin, we can Band-Aid that, like we've been talking about. But I've been in that 911 center, it's disgraceful, and it is entirely too tight in there. And those, those individuals work 12-hour shifts, I believe. We can do and we should do better than that. That's, I mean, that is something to me, that equates to kind of what we've got going with our EMS and, and fire. You know, we've got to have adequate spaces for our public safety and our first responders. So for me, the 911 center is at the top of the list. Did you all look at the jails?
I have a completely separate assessment.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just asking.
That'll be next month.
Just asking, just asking.
Just asking, just asking.
I, I, I renewed, I still renewed what I've been saying the whole time. I, I agree with what you're saying about the, the need for the nine one one center. I think we need to go out there to the business park where that old house is. You go in there and build a modern building and put a welcome center in the E nine one one center right there. E nine one, one center doesn't need to be right here where the sheriff's office is. If it were around here, uh, town event, for example, used to have their E nine one one there in the building in Benton. Now, it's up there off Peters Creek Road with Roanoke County. So it, it don't have, it's, it's a phone and a radio to dispatch stuff. I think that's where we need to go and put a, a nice welcome center, much like they got down on four sixty at that.
The consultants that just presented, the consultants that just presented to us on reverse site selection, they have really discouraged, um, you know, moving beyond the scope of what the park was built to do. And even to the extent of no more recreational aspects in it.
That's not recreation out there.
I'm not, I'm, I'm saying in addition to, but just not to put things out there that don't fit the conformity of what a business park needs to be. That's all, they just, I'm just reporting again what they said.
But that, that could not, right there where that building and them site was on. We don't even have a welcome center in that county, per se. Nothing wrong with that, it's right there on four sixty. I'm just saying, I gotta write to my opinion.
That's fine. We've got a good background.
And that's where, that's where that, I think that's a good place for what we already planted land.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, as Randy mentioned, um, there is a separate, um, study, if you will, review of, of the jail and from a security perspective, a maintenance perspective. We know that jail was built, I think, I wanna say nineteen thirty-nine.
That sounds right.
You know, give or take timeframe. Uh, so we know the sheriff's office, um, you know, there are some things in that, uh, whether it's heating and ventilation, things like that, things age. We know we need to take a look at that. Will we bring that information to the board? Um, I, I do understand from spectrum design, the deliverables there are four plans for all our facilities and a very comprehensive manuals for county staff and the board that we will receive as a deliverable. Um, and then, um, from the board's perspective, um, I know we've been spending a lot of time on large cap, talking about large capital projects, including the middle school, uh, the CTE, career technical education. And of course, I mentioned, uh, at the last joint meeting of the school board and the board, we are working, actively working now with Davenport, uh, on our financial modeling on, what does this look like from a debt service perspective? So this information is also very helpful for us, because I think one thing as the board, we have to take into consideration is, yes, CTE as a project, but also what other county projects may be needed specifically in the next five years or five to ten years. And certainly the next five years, from what I gathered from the board today, that nine one one center is critical. Uh, and so this information is certainly helpful with our financial modeling that we will also be sharing with Davenport to look at the entire picture, not just one or two projects, but, but help us. And so Davenport will look to be back with us likely in November to help guide our conversations in terms of our capital improvement plan, what's the debt service look like, certainly as we get into the budget. So, um, all of this information that we've been briefing the board on, I think, will help us go into, we, we wanna go into it comprehensively and look at everything, because there are a lot of needs, I think, um, Mr. Mitchell, I think you mentioned earlier today. You know, we hear a lot of operational needs and so forth across, but you, you mentioned one earlier with solid waste and, and, and also in capital, so as we take this comprehensive look. So I appreciate Randy certainly working to try to synthesize this down to, here's the immediate, here's the next one to five years, what are we looking at, five to ten? But then also, you know, fifteen to twenty, and this is something that continually be built upon, not only now, you know, with this board, but future boards in terms of, of, of making sure that we're keeping our facilities, um, not only well maintained, but make sure we're, we're doing it very strategically, um, and, 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 and planning for the future. So, um, Randy, thank you for your.
Can I ask you a question? Whoever needs to answer. Has there been any consideration to building a public safety complex that would take all of the components of public safety and have it encompass all these components? One build, uh, you know, E nine one one, public safety admin, sheriff's office and presence and so forth. Would that be more cost efficient to try to co-locate? And make, you know, whether we own the property or not, but do a new build, take all of these facilities in and co-locate? There's, there's been, Randy, I should put, Randy, but there's been some, the, the biggest, like, when we, when we met with all the departments, there was, um, there was a lot of support behind the sheriff's office and E nine one one, not necessarily being in the same building, but in a complex, you know, in, in public, there's some overlap with public safety, particularly from the standpoint that they, they need, um, well, the sheriff's office needs impound lot. Public safety has a lot of, you know, vehicles and, and that type of thing. So there was some overlap, but then there was also some concern about E nine one one and public safety being, the admin portion being too close together because, you know, because of the, the need for redundancy and not being, like if something were to happen in town, um, not having all your eggs in one basket, so that if something happened, they could, you know. And then, and really, and, I mean, from my perspective, you probably, if you were to do something like that, then you could probably want to do the EOC elsewhere. Or, you know, or, or have, you know, that redundancy, and quite frankly, you could put everything together and then, um, and then, you know, keep your EOC here. Um, the, you know, I, I guess we did not look at, at the idea of elim, eliminating the sheriff's office just because it's in good shape, you know, overall. It needs, it needs a full renovation, but it's big enough for the sheriff's office with expansion if you were to remove E nine, if you were to remove nine one one from it. Um, but then, you know, there again, you could, you know, if you were to take, to relocate the extension office elsewhere, then you could build an addition. I mean, you could take that, and I guess we have to look at it from a vehicular traffic, uh, standpoint from, because, um, you know, the, the administration doesn't, the public safety administration doesn't need to be, um, like, like a fire station where the location is critical, but they still need to be accessed to a light. And I guess if there were, we need to look if there would be too much congestion around the courthouse if you, you know, if you were to take every, you know, take where the DSS is and the sheriff's office and then that extension to create.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting that.
But I was just looking at where you could, that would be the most cost effective, because then you had two buildings that, you know, you could renovate with, with, you know, be less expensive than, um, the, I know that the sheriff's office in particular likes being close to the courthouse, just from a judicial complex and the back and forth with the jail. And now, as you, you make a decision, a different decision on the jail and, or quit utilizing the jail at all, or whatever you decide to do there, then, you know, there's, I think there's opportunities.
Thank you.
Our original thoughts after we, we met with public safety and the sheriff's office, immediately the social services building did come to mind because of its adjacency. I understand there's a lot of complexities with that, with having to find social services and new home. Um, I've done it before where we renovated a county-owned space, moved social services in there and their rent, basically over the next twenty years paid us back for the renovation costs of, like, to renovate a new space for them. Um, I'm not saying that that's the solution, but we were looking at co-locating like nine one one, perhaps the EOC, part of the sheriff's office that would open up some space in the new building. So I think there is potential, um, to co-locate places. I don't know if that would be appropriate for public safety. Um, it's still not gonna address their need for like apparatus storage and stuff like that, but, um, that's definitely one possibility.
It's a lot to say, I think y'all were alluding to that. It's a lot to say about standalone buildings, because God forbid a fire or any kind of catastrophe, you don't lose your entire concept. You've got standalone buildings that you can still maintain and work. You don't lose everything in one time. So that, we need to keep that in mind.
Don't put all your eggs in one basket.
Exactly. Put all your eggs in one basket.
There is another building for sale across from the courthouse, the old Franklin News Post. I don't know if that would lend itself to a nine one one building or not, but that's a possibility.
That's, that's got nothing for that. How much you want for that? There you go, keep Googling.
We, we had looked at, uh, the old movie theater, it's a possibility for DSS, um, because it's close to the schools, it's close to the courthouse, you know, it's right in the thick of things. It's easy, easy access, you've got a lot of parking. Uh, because the, the DSS has so many people that work there that are in the field. If you can accommodate, then the case managers come in and out and that type of thing.
Did y'all talk to them at the, uh, the old movie theater?
Um, we, we had someone inquire without telling, telling, you know, a, a confidential inquiry.
We talked to them a while back about the school. They didn't want to sell. They said they would trade if they built, if we could build them something to get to real estate. And that's also in the mix. I don't remember, remember how long ago that was? It would've been, I'd say, five or six years ago. They did not want to sell it. That's why I asked you. They said they would trade.
I, I think she's a widow now?
She was then too.
Yeah, so, well, I don't know, maybe she's just getting older, but she seemed, there seemed to be some interest.
So she's changed her mind. That's cool.
But it, you know, it wasn't, you know, it was a confidential inquiry and not giving any information, because we thought that if, if we did, then it would be right, exactly.
Is anybody else on the board then, other than me when we did that? Nobody else remembers that? We did talk to them. Maybe that's when we started the renovation. You would remember that, you would hear. That was there, right? Maybe that was the first time when they come to you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank y'all for your time. Thank you very much for the presentation. And this time we've got a ten minute break and then we'll come back with more.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Do we have a second?
Sir.
Madam Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundis?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. All right. To welcome everyone here this afternoon. Good to see all of you out. Appreciate you coming out and taking part in the county's business. Before we, uh, call up, uh, our first, uh, hearing for, with Stephanie Mathena, I'm gonna ask our county attorney, Jim Gwynn, to make a statement, uh, for, on the county's behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you'll recall, uh, in the, uh, in the recent consideration, excuse me, of, uh, by the board of SROs, both in public and private schools in the county, the board asked me to look into whether or not there was any legal impediment to placing SROs in a private school. Uh, we did the research. We could not find any case law on the subject at all. However, we did find two opinions from the Virginia Attorney General. The first opinion in two thousand thirteen said it was legal to place public personnel in private schools. In two thousand nineteen, uh, the Attorney General issued the opposite opinion, said it was not legal to place public personnel in private schools, and specifically stated that he overruled his previous opinion. So you have asked me to provide you with an opinion, and the legal research I've done tells me that there, there is not a definite, a definite answer to your question. And under those circumstances, I, I, I think the obligation that I have is to advise, uh, the board that placing public employees in a private school could conceivably expose the county and sheriff to potential liability. Under the circumstances, um, I would suggest to you that I cannot in good faith advise you that you should place public employees in private schools. Now, I will note that in the two thousand nineteen opinion, the Attorney General did state that, um, law enforcement officers who are working off duty can be paid, uh, by private schools, basically for moonlighting, uh, and working there. And that that would be certainly, um, one alternative, uh, that would be perfectly legal from the sheriff's standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn. All right.
Did you wanna do the appointment?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. I don't often see many of your faces, so good to see you tonight. All right, tonight I'm here to present to you an application, uh, for a special use permit. The application is of Jamie Murray applicant and Jim Murray SML South LLC owner, requesting a special use permit with possible conditions on two parcels with a combined total of two point two three acres, Zoned B two, general business. This property is located at eleven nine seventy Old Franklin Turnpike in the Union Hall Election District of Franklin County, and further identified by Real Estate Records as tax map parcel numbers zero six six zero one zero two zero 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 and zero six six zero one zero two one zero one. The purpose of the special use permit is to allow for a daycare center, day nurseries on a business property. This property does have a future land use designation of the Village of Union Hall. Um, so many of you are probably familiar with the site. It's at South Lake Plaza. Um, it's an existing building. It's about ten thousand square feet. The applicant is currently proposing to use about half of that, four thousand square feet, with the option to expand, um, if the business does well. The applicant did indicate that it would be a maximum of forty children and eight teachers or employees. Um, and I will note that the state has regulations on those children to, to teacher ratios. So there will be other agencies in there to check that. Um, the facility will have a kitchen, and then the proposed hours would be from six AM to six PM. Um, and at this time, it's assumed that the daycare would probably be able to utilize the existing parking, but that will be verified at site plan review. Um, the property was rezoned in nineteen ninety from A one to B two to allow for a restaurant and small shop commercial site. As you all are probably aware, it's hosted a restaurant, a home furnishings and furniture store over the years. Um, as part of this nineteen ninety rezone, there were, there were, uh, several proffers. The owner was to comply with the wishes of the staff as far as signage, outdoor lighting, dumpsters, or storage, adequate fire protection and compliance with staff, hours no later than eleven PM, signage to be no greater than sixty square feet, and twenty foot of landscaping along the road frontage. I also note that there was a special use permit in nineteen ninety-nine on this property. Um, from our knowledge, nothing ever, ever came of that, so it's null and void, but just so you all know. Um, as to date, we have not received any comments or concerns, nor did we have any, any commission hearing last month. Just to give you, um, some context, if you're not familiar with the area, it's in Union Hall between Whistlestop and Turner's. It's gone to sleep here. Here's an aerial shot, again. Parking lot is here, the building is here, and this is the back parcel, and you'll see in the next slide, or maybe two, two in front of this, there is a playground and it would be on this back parcel here. This is just showing that it's in the village buffer, completely surrounded by that village buffer. Adjoining zoning is a, is a mix. Um, to the western side, we have PCD. To the eastern side, we have A one, and then you can see we have some business interspersed throughout the village. Here's a concept plan. It may be a little hard to read, um, but if you see this building here, this is where it would be. This yellow portion, if I'm not mistaken, will be the main portion used at this time. This yellow portion, if I'm not mistaken, will be the main portion used at this time. And again, it could be extended if, if it does well. And then, you can't really read it, but if you see my mouse, the, the playground will go back here in the back. And if you have questions about that placement, the applicant is here and can probably lend some more information there. Staff's analysis is that we've reviewed the application and recommend approval of the special use permit for the daycare center, day nursery. As I've mentioned several times, this has been commercial for, for quite a number of years now, so minimal impacts to this area are expected, if any. It's not really acting in a different, different sense than it has been. Granting the special use permit will not change the character of the zoning district and will be in harmony, harmony with other uses. Daycare uses are inherent within a village, particularly in the landscape that we're in now. We certainly have a, not just a housing shortage, but a daycare shortage, certainly. Union Hall is, is no exception, nor is Franklin County. And then, the comprehensive plan does support this request with the approval of the recommended conditions that we have. The planning commission heard this last month and voted unanimously to approve the special use permit or recommend approval with the following six conditions. Number one, the property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the concept plan dated July 5th, 2023, and provided at the time of application. Number two, the applicant shall adhere to all VDOT requirements. Number three, the applicant shall obtain a safe, adequate, and proper for the septic system on the property and submit to the Virginia Department of Health and comply with all other VDH regulations. Pardon me. Number four, the playground area shall be completely enclosed by a fence. Number five, the applicant property owner shall maintain the existing natural vegetative buffer along all property lines and comply with the zoning ordinance landscaping regulations, Article 2, Division 3.1b, which requires perimeter landscaping A along the adjacent property to the east. And number six, the owner shall install and maintain a 20-foot landscaping strip along the frontage, along Route 40, in accordance with the 1990 proffers for this, for this property. I will note that was never put in, so we're just kind of getting up to speed here and putting that as a condition for the property. Again, it was proffered in 1990 and has yet to come to fruition. With that, I will open it to any questions you all might have.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Stephanie?
I have one for the applicant one already.
Don't see any for you.
Okay. Both the applicant and the property owner are here for, for questions.
If they want to come up, if they want to say something. If you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Jim Murray. I have a residence at 340 Niver Drive in Union Hall, Virginia. Thank you for your time and listening to this. I guess Stephanie said it all. I go to a lot of the economic development meetings, and I know that childcare is a very important thing to the county. In addition to being a building owner, I also want to do things that are good for the community so that people continue to like me, hopefully. And I hope that you'll, you'll be approved on this.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Murray. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to thank you all for your time, consideration, and the opportunity to speak on behalf of my childcare proposal. I've worked in childcare for the past five years. I began as an assistant, earned my Child Development Associate, and worked my way up to co-director at my previous center. While working there, I realized that my passion for children grew, along with my interest in opening my own facility. As you all have read through my proposal, you see the need for this service for the economic development of Union Hall as well as Franklin County. The need for this service is critical since there are none available in this area. As stated, the average a parent travels for childcare is a minimum of 19 miles from the proposed site. In recent weeks, a local childcare facility has also closed down. Now, there's 10, 20, 30 children without care, and families that are having to decide whether to go to work or stay home to care for their children. As a single mother of five-year-old twins, I relate with these families needing childcare. The waiting list at present is upwards of a year. Having an additional childcare facility would allow for the wait time to lessen. My childcare would allow families to continue to provide for themselves, knowing that their children are well taken care of. Also, additional units are readily available for my expansion. And since the initial application, word of mouth has prompted interest, and I've received letters of intent from families. As you can see, the need for additional childcare facilities are crucial to the growth of Franklin County. I thank you again for this opportunity and look forward to your final approval so my vision can become our reality.
Anyone have any questions for these two?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for this application. Daycare is very important. It's a very important, critical need for our working families, and, and I'm very grateful that you all are finding capacity in your life to, to provide this. I just have a couple of questions. There are numerous conditions on this permit as a result of the development team like VDH and VDOT with, you know, a list of things that are going to be required to get an approved site plan. Do you all foresee issues with getting those things accomplished?
No, ma'am. Not at all.
Okay, okay. It's a long list, and it's a lot of stuff.
It is. It is.
And that my only other question was regarding whether you'll be accepting children with disabilities.
Absolutely.
Will you, will you be accommodating, you know, in terms of bathrooms and privacy issues and ADA, all of those things that are necessary to take care of those children?
At the moment, I'm just working on getting open. So in order to provide for special needs children, there's a longer list.
Oh, yes.
Yes. I do plan on accepting them once I'm able to. It won't be in the beginning, but I will when I'm able to.
Okay. And do you guys fall under the auspices of the Department of Education, or in any way, or under the Department of Behavioral Health? I, I, I'm not familiar with what domain in, in the Commonwealth is over. Social services? Okay, okay. Well, thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to throw my two cents worth in. I think it's very admirable. It's hard to find babysitters. It's hard to find anybody to look after your children, especially in the Union Hall area, and I, I commend y'all so much for opening this up. I whole, I solely support you.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Can't get.
I want to.
I'll let you when we get to that point. Anyone else have anything for these two? Don't see any. Thank y'all. This time, we'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for this?
No, Mr. Chairman. I have no speakers for this item.
Okay. Is there anyone here tonight in the gallery that would like to speak in regard to this project? Hey, seeing none, I will close the floor for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I sure would love to make a motion.
Go ahead. Floor's yours.
I make a motion that the use will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent properties, that the character of the zoning district will not be changed thereby, that such use will be in harmony with the use permitted by right in the zoning district and with public health, safety, and general welfare in the community. Therefore, I move to recommend approval of the applicant's request for a special use permit to allow for a daycare center, nursery, in accordance with Section 25-3, 36B of the Zone Ordinance, with the six conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Okay. That's all that I see on there, on here. I did skip over the appointments earlier. I'd like to come back to that. I think Supervisor Smith has an appointment to make.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Supervisors appoint Stephanie Mathina, one of our senior planners, as appointee on the Roanoke Valley Transportation Planning Organization as the TPO Technical Rep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to appoint Stephanie Mathina to this committee. Any further discussion before we take a final vote? You want to defend yourself?
No, thank you. I didn't know if I should go there.
All right. It says no roll call is needed, so all in favor that Stephanie assume this role in this committee, let me know when saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Steph.
He do rest all the juicy, the juicy stuff in there.
All right. Let's see here. Other matters for supervisors. I'll start over here with Mr. Nick Mitchell. Do you have anything?
I really appreciate everything we heard today from Kevin about the Ag Fair and stuff. That was a great deal. My family thoroughly enjoyed, and also the presentation by Mr. Golden about the landfill. That's important stuff. That's a big project the county's doing down there. It's a lot happening, and I appreciate all the departments and everybody coming forward and giving us updates on stuff.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple items. I don't know if the board's aware or not, but Roanoke Gas applied for their certificate of need in February of 2019. That's going to expire this coming February of 2024. They've applied for a three-year extension. I'm requesting again that they come back and address this board and bring us up to speed with where they stand on this project. I think it's paramount on us to be aware of the contract we signed with them at Summit View, and everyone on this board needs to be made aware of where we stand on that. And also, I'm again requesting, moving forward with the completion of my dumpster site on Grassy Hill. Sunday, I went up there. There was a white toilet sitting out there, two mattresses, numerous rugs. It's a junk haul, and I'm tired of looking at it, and my constituents are tired of looking at it. And that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Cundiff?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to say that the Rocky Mount Front Canada First Respondents Memorial Event, we holding one on October 7th at time at 11:00 a.m. Where, 12:50 North Main Street, Rocky Mount, Virginia, right there where the memorial is. And it's, this, this memorial is dedicated to our first responders. It's, it's very, it's very solemn place to be. You know, it's, it's, it's just wonderful that, that the county and the town is doing this to help, or to recognize our, our first responders. So I would like to invite everybody in the audience, plus the county, to come out to it. Like I said, it's October 7th at 11:00 a.m. If you don't know where North Main Street is, part of the Rocky Mount Park, it's right there next to the Rocky Mount Fire Department. The memorial is. And we'd be more tickled to death if everybody come out and support us. Is this the time I pull? Okay. I want also, as we started the meeting, I pulled number three. Excuse me. Yeah. Three, the county water tank logo. I have a lot of constituents who'd like to speak about that, so when the time comes, I'd like to give the floor to them. Let them get it.
How many do you have?
How, how many do I have out here who want to speak? Three? Three or four?
We, we can listen to three. I'm not going to open up the floor for a whole lot of discussion on it, but. Okay. I can, I can give the floor to three when it, that time comes, but. You want to do anything else with, with this?
Got what?
Do you want to do anything else with this?
No.
Because that public comment is going to be after we take any decision.
I think we need to do it before, before we make a decision. Is that what you're saying? Yes. I think, I think our constituents need to be heard on this. It affects them.
Unorthodox, isn't it?
I mean, you do have the authority as a chair to recognize whatever.
Okay.
But you're not, I mean, we have not, we've never used public comment. The reason it's at the end is because we don't use it for.
Yeah.
Items that are on the agenda.
Can I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As a board member, and I think if citizens have shown up here to speak, I would like to hear what they have to say.
All right. So you got, have three that want to speak?
Yes.
All right. I'll let them come up. Madam Clerk, if you want to call the three people that would like to speak in regard to the water tower at Union Hall?
Ms. Debra Crawford?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Debra Crawford. I live in 328 Brooks Point Lane, Union Hall, for, living there since 1979. So I've been, to me, I feel like I'm part of the village, even though I'm not the village proper. I had spoke with the county about the tower and about how it was going to be painted, and we knew that it was going to be the light blue color, but we weren't real sure about the, the logos. So Mr. Sandy was nice enough to send me pictures, and I assure you all have this one in your package. We also have a Union Hall Village Committee, and they have been meeting for the last few years since we've started the village plan, and they came up with one that looks kind of like this. My drawings are not the best, but it does say, "Welcome to South Lake, Village of Union Hall." As you've heard tonight in the previous presentation, the word "South Lake" and the word "village" in Union Hall has came up quite a bit, so I think we're, all would say that we've pretty much branded ourselves with that logo, and we all like it. So we're hoping that you will consider, and, and I'm not real sure how this is going to work, or, because the public really didn't know anything about this taking place. So, you know, I went out and looked at the sign at the summit tonight, and on one side is Franklin County, and on the other side is Blue Ridge, "Welcome to Blue Ridge." So we were hoping that this one would be put on the pinhook side coming into town, coming saying, "Welcome to Franklin County," and that we would have the "South Lake" sign coming from Rocky Mount saying, "Welcome to South Lake, Village of Union Hall." I appreciate y'all's consideration in this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My, my crayon drawing. I borrowed my green kid's crayons. Believe me, this was, we had a meeting last week, and this was just what we came up with. Mr. Sandy had sent me a picture of this one. And I have not had a chance to have a meeting with the group since then, but number three would be, if I had a choice, I don't know what their choice would be, but, "Welcome to South Lake, Village of Union Hall," which is kind of like what we had up there just now. And if it would cost less to leave the Franklin County off on one side and in on the other, what, whatever your pleasure is. I appreciate y'all listening. Thank you. I'll leave this up here in case they might want to use it.
We don't.
Lori's here, and Jim's here, and you said four people. I don't think there was a fourth person.
Three people. Yes, please.
Well, I'm, I'm back with you again.
Okay.
Again, my name is Jim Murray, 340 Niver Drive in Union Hall, Virginia. I've been working with the Union Hall Planning Committee now for years, kind of de facto member since I owned.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes. I'm kind of de facto member since I owned the building. And I think that we've just had a challenge in driving some of the growth that we need because of maybe even identity. You know, we all kind of identify with this South Lake identity. The name of my building is actually South Lake Plaza. That sign's been around since early 90s, and we just really wanted to perpetuate that type of thing, and also the Union Hall Village. I think one of the biggest challenges we all have is that, you know, the Union Hall Village has had numerous studies over the years with great plans to, to grow, give us the services that we need, and they're not there, and we think having this sign would help us to really identify ourselves, make us stand out, hopefully drive the kind of growth that we're looking for. Thank you.
Lori Dupierre?
Hi, Lori Dupierre, 112 Cedar Ridge Road.
Hi, Lori Dupierre, one twelve Cedar Ridge Road, Union Hall. I concur with both what Debbie and Jim have to say, we have been meeting for a few years. I, in trying to promote some economic development down in Union Hall, I'm a business owner there. And I am also asking that we add the word "South Lake" to the very big, visible, beautiful water tower that we're so glad to have in Union Hall. When I decided to name my business, I saw that the identifier of South Lake Plaza was there since the nineties. South Lake Real Estate, a proposed South Lake Town Center. And I named my business, South Lake Spa. So we feel that it's already been an identifier for quite some time. And we have a lot of businesses that have shut down there, we have a lot of vacant buildings, so we were hoping to sort of use, you know, South Lake as our identifier to help economic development there. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Cundiff?
Well, I haven't had time to talk to my constituents about the three that the county has proposed, and I was wondering if I could have a little more time to talk with them and come up with a consensus proposal.
Do you wish to table this till next month?
I wish to table this till I can talk to my constituents about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before the.
Yeah.
The board takes that decision, maybe Mr. Cundiff, and I think Mr. Sandy's been in contact with the water authority specifically on the timing of the painting of the tank, and I think that's imminent. I don't know if it is such that waiting till October will affect the pricing for, for the logos. I know there was some communication, Mr. Sandy, back and forth earlier in the week that I saw come through the emails. If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, maybe get clarification, Mr. Cundiff, because it, I, I don't know.
Sure, yeah.
In terms of the timing.
What the water authority is really trying to do is coordinate with their painting contractor, just to have them come out one time. So what they've done is they've given us the estimate for the one in your packet for the Franklin County logo, so we actually have a cost estimate for that, the, the company is prepared to, to do that one. This one, so what the recommendation in your staff report was to put this on two sides of the tank. If, that one again has been designed, and we have a cost estimate, so that was the number in your packet. These were just quick examples that the water authority kind of put on a napkin, so to speak. These were just quick ideas of maybe some other possibilities. These have not been priced or designed at this point. I think one of the concerns with waiting till October is that we may miss that, that timeframe to have the contractor come out at one time and do both painting jobs, so paint the tank and paint the graphic, which may end up affecting the price. So it's not that we can't do it, it's not that we can't wait. I think what it will result in may be a higher cost if we have to delay, and, and the contractor may have to come out two different times. So that would be the only concern there. I think if we decide tonight, I think what they told us, they could probably get a design and a price estimate in about a week. So I think it's, it's really the pleasure of the board, if, if you want to wait and, and allow some more time for discussion to come up with another option, or choose one of the, I guess, the four options that we have tonight, and we can kind of move forward, move forward with one of those, so. And again, we recommend it on two sides, it could just be placed on one side. So again, it's, it's totally up to the board on what decision and what logo the board would like to have.
If we give a decision within a week, does the board, does the board have to be present to listen to it? Or can I just give the decision that my constituents say we'd like to have?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I think it might be worth at this point to kind of just take the pulse of the board in terms of whether we're open to a different design than what we have on the other tanks. And if we are, then Mr. Cundiff, you know, if we're willing to entertain something different, then Mr. Cundiff's suggestion may have some merit, the timing issue is of course of concern. But I think we probably need to decide if we are in favor of doing something different and branding that for Union Hall.
Mr. Sandy, it's my understanding that the tank at Summit View has Franklin County on one side and Virginia's Blue Ridge on the other.
Correct.
What was, can you give an explanation how that came about?
I might defer to Chris, I think the, that was a relationship with VBR. And, and I can't speak to the exact specifics of that agreement, but I think VBR had a part in, in taking care of that logo that was on the, the opposite side.
That, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the specific tank on U S two twenty, the Virginia's, Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Foundation paid for that entire project of branding that water tank using their funds, of, of course, both with the county logo, and as mentioned earlier this evening, the county logo on one side, and then VBR's logo on the other for motorists and so forth. But that's how that project came about, and was, again, entirely paid for by the foundation for Virginia's Blue Ridge.
And I think size-wise, that tank is a little bit bigger. I don't remember the specific sizes, but that tank is a little bit bigger than this one at Union Hall.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, I guess, Ford, what's your pleasure?
I second Tommy's motion to table it.
I think the people have come up here and spoke to it, and Mr. Cundiff's asking for some more time, I think we should give it to him. I, I understand there might be a cost issue, but we got to stay at that water tank for a long time, a little bit of money's not going to.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to table this till next month. So, Madam Clerk, you want to take a roll call on that?
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff?
Yes.
Supervisor Lori Smith?
No.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson?
It was to table it for a month.
Yeah.
Yes.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Mike Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.
The motion passes?
Okay, so it's tabled for a month, Tommy, so you have time to get with your constituents down there.
I humbly, and my constituents humbly, thank you for doing this.
All right. Other matters for supervisors, are you, is, is that the last thing you had?
Well, let's see, I just want to thank the board for what they just did.
Okay.
I do thank, but like I said, I agree with Mr. Mitchell, we've got a lot of stuff we need to do with, with the landfill. We've got a lot of stuff to do with the schools, we've got, we just, we've got our hands full, but I'm very respectful of this board that we can work it out.
Okay, going over to Ronnie Mitchell, you have anything?
Uh, yeah. With the, getting to the time of year where we get down to figuring out what carryover funds are, I would like to bring the school to the table, talked about, to talk about some capital projects, primarily HVAC. I know there's still some schools in the county that either have a cafeteria or a gymnasium that still don't have, still doesn't have air conditioning. So I'd like for us to consider that, you know, if, if they come to the table with any of their carryover money, try to get some of those projects, I think we did it one year for like Farams Cafeteria. And specifically like Farams, Jim doesn't, still doesn't have air conditioning, and they host a lot of awards events and plays and stuff like that, and it's, it's a little uncomfortable in there, so. I would like for the, for the school to come and talk to us about some of the smaller capital projects. I know we're talking about a lot of large capital projects with them, but some stuff that we can tackle with some of their leftover funds. And, you know, I mentioned earlier about, kudos to the board for purchasing some apparatus, and I'd just like to take the time to, to thank all of our fire EMS and, and police in the county as they continue to serve our county. It's, it's remarkable how we all work together, and to see the volunteerism in the county doing better on the fire side. I mentioned to the board earlier at lunch about several new volunteers throughout the whole county, Glade Hill, Snow Creek, Rocky Mount. So, you know, the recruitment efforts, something's working. I know we had a lot of volunteers at the fair. And I'm not going to steal this away from Tim, but we did the fifty thousand dollar grant. I'm not stealing your thunder, but I want to give my two cents on it, since you let me speak before you. But with, with some of the leftover money of that grant, we were able to have a firefighter two class that Rocky Mount Fire Department hosted and helped put on, very successful, had a hundred percent pass rate. And as we move forward, we want to continue to, to host some of these trainings and get more firefighters with their training. So I would encourage this board with the good news for Mr. Carter, knowing that we do have some leftover funds coming, to go ahead and allocate that fifty thousand dollars towards that grant again, and then give the Fire Association the flexibility to ask for some of the certain projects and tools that some of the departments need, but more importantly, if we want to host another training event like that, where we, where it's open to all the county fire departments, I think it's very important that we keep that going. Because we're only getting stronger and better, so, you know, I know I only got three meetings to go after this, but please continue to do what you're doing in supporting our volunteer firefighters out there. Doesn't go unnoticed, don't forget about our public safety, keep giving them the equipment and the tools that they need, and definitely our sheriff's office, because they are great servants to this county, that's all I got.
All right, Ronnie Thompson? Good. Lori?
The only thing I really have, on Mr. Whitlow, can you give us an update on the timeframe for, to begin the zoning rewrite process?
Yes, Ms. Smith, and I, and I think we've sent some communications to the board and, and some weekly packets and so forth. I think the most recent was, maybe it was the week before last, with, with that timing and schedule. As indicated on, on those updates, from the planning staff standpoint, the emphasis is completing the West Lake Village Plan update, the Union Hall Village Plan update, and then also beginning the continued work, it's not beginning, but the continued work, if you will, on the comprehensive planned demographic piece from the two planning district commissions. And so as I understand, and I know the planning staff is here, as I understand, all of that work is to be completed, targeted by the end of the year with going to the Planning Commission in October, November, and then to this board for those village plans in December. Once those plans, of course, are completed and adopted, that frees up more staff resources to continue that work on the RFP with zoning consultants. I think the framework's being laid out for that in, in terms of the RFP. Of course, funds are budgeted already in the existing account, and we're budgeted with the adoption of this year's budget. But we can continue those regular updates, but I do think the timing from the staff standpoint, pending no hiccups, if you will, with, with the, with, with those two village plans, and in a lot of work, Ms. Smith, I know your district and as well as Union Hall have gone into those plans. And I think both planning staff, and I'm sure those committees will be glad to get those village plans approved and ready to move on to the zoning ordinance work ahead of us, so.
Yes, thank you for that.
Yes.
I appreciate it, that's kind of a pet peeve of mine. And I just wanted to take a moment, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cundiff, I wanted just to kind of, on a personal note, my dissent in the vote we just took was in large part due to the funding issue. I think you, you guys know what a stickler I am when it comes to just, you know, out, thinking about allocating money that we're not prepared to allocate. And so my decision was based on the timing of escalating costs that Mr. Sandy had spoke to. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a personal note on that.
Well, I appreciate that, but we've been over backwards with all the other people, so I think we're, you've been over backwards for hours. Thank you though, for that reason.
Yes, sir.
All right, the only thing I had, I wanted to just add to what Ronnie Mitchell said earlier. I want to look into the carryover funds that we have, and again, we don't know how much we're going to have yet, but I'd like to be prepared to set aside at least the fifty thousand that we did this past grant cycle. And to answer, there you are, Mr. Ledbetter, the question you asked, could that money be used for training? And I spoke with Mr. Carter today, and yes, it can be. That money is a grant that's made available to the Fire Association, that's available to the, the fire companies and rescue squads in the county. And if all of you agree that that's the best use for some of that money, then it certainly can be. And the training that you all are doing, I think is commendable, it goes to serve and help the entire county, all the agencies in the county. So thank you for that work, and for the companies that y'all work with, the Rocky Mount Fire Department, I see some, there are people here tonight, and, you know, the other agencies in the county. You know, we, we can't thank you enough, and we want to make sure that we continue this grant opportunity so that these, a lot of the companies in, fire companies in the county used this money for some, we would look at as small ticket items, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars here and there. But for them, that saves a whole lot of hot dog sales and raffle ticket sales and pancake breakfasts and stuff that they shouldn't have to spend time away from their families more than they do. So for me, it's an honor to use some of those carryover funds to help. And like I said, I think, I hope we can at least set aside the, at least the fifty thousand we did before, and possibly, hopefully in the future, maybe that money can grow as the needs grow. And again, thank you for all that you do for Franklin County, all of you. Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Whitlow, that's all I have at this time, so unless you have anything, I'm going to go to.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, since Chief Ledbetter's here, I'd like to thank you all in the department for helping Twin Creeks Distillery putting out that fire the other night. Very commendable, and I heard a lot of nice things about the Faram Fire Department, so thank you.
All right.
I'll, I'll echo the same thing. Bye, bye, appreciate it, appreciate it a whole lot.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the time set aside in our meeting for public comments. Public comment gives citizens the opportunity to address the board in person or in writing on matters appropriate to the responsibilities of the board. Speakers must direct all comments to the board as a whole and not to individual board members or employees of the board or county. Personal attacks or insulting, profane or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Likewise, commentary on issues that are not within the purview of the board and that are not a function of local government and over which we have no control are not acceptable. Public comment is not a question and answer session, and board members will not answer questions during public comment. If a speaker violates these rules, the chair may rule the speaker out of order, and upon a second violation, have the speaker removed from the podium. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Mr. Josh Smallwood?
Good evening.
Good afternoon, or good evening, thank you for your time. Josh Smallwood, head of school at Christian Heritage Academy, six twenty-five Glenwood Drive. I'll be speaking on their behalf this evening. When I met with you guys last spring, it was more of an introduction of sorts, and to say thank you for making a difficult decision to place a deputy at every school in this county, including C H A. And that was difficult. I'd like to thank the county attorney for providing a bit of background research that he's done, and I do appreciate that. That decision placed our sheriff's department shorthanded, and they did the best that they could, and we're very thankful for that. Deputy Hodges did a fantastic job, he was welcomed with a smile and a thumbs up every day, and our parents were very thankful for your difficult and tough decision. Now we're almost six months after the situation in Nashville, a heinous act, a heinous crime that was committed at a school very much like C H A. Unfortunately, we find ourselves in a very different situation at C H A than we did after your decision. We no longer have a deputy to protect our children. You made that difficult decision. Our community is asking why, they may have a bit of an answer this evening, I'm not sure they'll be satisfied with that. The years that he quoted of those AGs, I do think you could re- The years that he quoted of those AGs, I do think you could research who was in office at that time and understand its political rhetoric at the end of the day. I'd be interested in what our current Attorney General would have to say on the matter. It's a very pro-liberty, pro-parent-choice administration in Richmond. There were four bills this past year on parent choice that made their way through the House and were then killed in the Senate. Maybe a very different set of circumstances this January. I'd be interested in what side you would be on at that point. Many of you may have heard from our parents and their communications. If any of that was unkind, I apologize. As one person put it a little earlier, if you get between a mama bear and their cub, they get a little angry, and I do apologize if you receive that. I'd caution our CHA parents, if they're here tonight and are making further comment, to stand out and be different, to be the light. The Apostle Paul in 2 Timothy, Chapter 2, Verse 24, he cautioned Timothy to not be quarrelsome, but kind to everyone, able to teach patiently enduring evil, correcting opponents with gentleness. I would encourage them to continue their discourse in gentleness. You have difficult decisions to make. You made that without your attorney's suggestion this past spring. You're very capable of doing that again. As I mentioned, the new Attorney General may have a very different opinion than that of 2019. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment, please?
We typically don't make comments. All right. Please. Next speaker.
Ms. Pamela Brooks.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm a resident of Benton Mountain, Virginia, at eighty-five Glendale Road, and I'm representing twenty-two homeowners who live on our road, what's called Sling's Gap Road Route 612. It lies between Roanoke and Franklin Counties. Since June of this year, we have a hundred and five acres and other large tracts of land that have been sold to new owners. It's been clear cut, and the new owners have plans to develop for multiple house sites along this one section of about a mile. It's a dirt and gravel road. Please consider the increased property values and growth that generates a significant tax base, previously undeveloped farmland. Our residents are in great need of improved roads for better access as well as for our fire and rescue. The growth of our area is out of alignment with the road conditions, and the traffic count has been significantly increased just since June, and the traffic count is up as We have been in touch with our local VDOT supervisor and also superintendent who have provided us with information about costs, and I think each one of you have been provided a copy of that this evening. We'd like for you to consider how much money is being spent, and I, from what I'm told, Roanoke County is funding that because they are in, the access to Franklin County is through Roanoke County. That's the only way you can get into our area. But the budget for every year would take probably two years of the monies that would be spent to surface treat the road. So there is a significant savings. Not only that, but to serve the area of the people in that section of the Blackwater District. I would like to propose that you review the costs provided by me from VDOT that both perhaps Roanoke County and Franklin County could share the cost associated to upgrade the road for safer and sustainable levels. By doing this, it would significantly save each year, literally in two years, you could save enough to surface treat the road and make it better accessible for all of us who live there. The total cost analysis that I provided you does not include any snow removal costs at all. Currently, we are on the last run if we have snow. That means no access from fire or rescue if anybody in our area becomes ill. Thank you for your time. Hope you'll consider this.
Thank you.
Ed Saunders.
My name's Ed Saunders, 245 Nature Zone Road, Faram, Virginia. First off, I want to thank the board, and I want to thank Mr. Sandy and Mr. Whitlow for allowing us to use the property and working with us through some of the kinks to get everything squared away. Everybody's pretty excited about having some stuff to do out there. I feel like I'm screaming into that. I'm sorry. First off, I want to talk to everybody about opportunity. I know a lot of us, when we graduated college or when we got out of high school, getting that first job was always the hardest thing to do. Once you get a recommendation, it makes it a little easier for the future. And you guys know I like to talk, so at the most recent Faram Volunteer Day, I spoke to some of the kids about opportunities. And one of the things that a park allows for some of those kids is especially in like ecotourism, they can have a job to put on a resume that says, hey, I worked locally, I was able to keep a house in Faram, I was able to keep my rent, I was able to keep all of those things, but I was able to work for a place that doesn't have college in the name. And that means a lot for when I put it on a resume. So to those kids, you know, talking about what interests they had and how they hope to advance their career and how they hope to move through the world, I got really excited about the opportunity that we could give them, having a park there in Faram. I know you guys are super busy. I won't take any more of your time, but I would really like for you guys to consider that, those opportunities for the kids at Faram. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Johnson.
I'm not recording this with my young friend. Oh. Good evening.
Good evening.
I, I'm David Johnson. I live at eighteen fifteen Faram Mountain Road, and I'm here to speak in favor of the Faram parcel proposal developed by the Friends of Faram Park. I've lived in Faram since nineteen seventy-nine. I taught chemistry and environmental science at Faram College until I retired in twenty fifteen. One of my areas was environmental planning, and that included environment, uh, community planning and development. Comprehensive community planning considers the health and well-being of the people, the economy, and the environment, the three pillars that that support a vibrant community. The proposal I'm speaking for tonight is indeed a comprehensive plan, and it addresses the top priorities that were identified in the Faram Area Village Plan that was adopted in twenty nineteen. It includes event and recreation space that will help us enjoy our leisure leisure time together. It features locally sourced, truly affordable housing and a permanent fight for the farmer's market. And it also features very strong environmental preservation and stewardship. So how is it this plan can fit so effectively and beautifully with the needs of Faram community? It has to do that it was developed by people who live in Faram, who know Faram, who love Faram, and want to work hard to develop Faram. They continuously solicited feedback from community folk as they developed that plan, and it is included in the plan. I was back up in my hometown in Michigan last summer for two months while that plan was being developed. And when I got back and studied that plan, I was amazed at just how fine it was, really represents great thinking, good work, and a true vision. Just before leaving town, I did go to the the BRI Open House where the master plan of the Faram parcel was presented. And it had some very nice features, but I did have some serious concerns about parts of that plan. And in fact, I think that the Friends of Faram Park was organized largely in response to the options that were offered in that plan. Their proposal addressed my concerns, and I've joined that group now, and I really hope to help them realize their vision. Thank you.
Steve Brooks.
Good evening. I'm Steve Brooks, eighty-five Glendale Road, Benton Mountain. Speaking about the Sling's Gap Road, I've lived on that or just off of that road for forty-some years. VDOT has spent many, many times up there grading the road, dropping gravel on it, and being an excavation myself. I wonder why do they keep putting so much material down, and it's only good for a few months or so? And after talking with Dale Smith at VDOT, he told us what the numbers were on maintaining it and how much it would cost to surface treat it, and it makes a whole lot of sense money-wise to put the money into some long-term investment of surface treating rather than throwing gravel at status quo and having washboards a week later. I don't know how many of y'all ever get to drive on washboards, but I'm well experienced from my forty-some years of being up there, and I don't really complain about it because it's where I want to live. But there is a lot of development going on. There's been land sold recently this year, sixty-some acres on one side of the road, and they're clear cutting it. And the owner told me he plans to put in some home sites and sell it. And another parcel's forty-five acres on the other side of this same farm. They both border Sling's Gap for a long ways, and I don't know how much development that's going to make, but we already have twenty-two people living up there, and there's probably maybe two thousand acres of land that these roads serve. So it's getting to be a lot more traffic, and we would appreciate if it's possible to work maybe with Roanoke County and find the money to surface treat rather than keep throwing gravel at this road and costing more in a couple of years. So y'all take a look at the paperwork we presented and see if there's money to be appropriated to get some surface treating with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Cummins.
I'm Kathy Cummins. I live at three five seven nine Kemp Ford Road in Union Hall. Rocky Mount is celebrating its one hundred and fiftieth year. I've seen a video made for the occasion featuring citizen comments on what they like about Rocky Mount, what makes them have pride in their town, and I jotted down some quotes. It's ever evolving. It's friendly. It's the people. When asked about the town's future, citizens said, there's a willingness to try something new. They wanted to see continued growth. They want reasons for the younger generations to stay or return to Rocky Mount. They want the town to fully realize its potential. This sounds like a population who wants Rocky Mount to be successful and progressive, a community known for its friendly people where every citizen counts. At Rocky Mount's one hundred and fiftieth birthday, this is a good time for reflection about where the town has been and where it's going. Rocky Mount began in eighteen seventy-three during the years of Reconstruction after Civil War. This was a time when the future for newly liberated black Americans looked bright, that is, until the old guard took over again just a few years later, and the Black Codes, segregation, the KKK, Jim Crow, and lynchings became the order of the day through the nineteen sixties. The practice of slavery existed in Virginia for two hundred and fifty years. Then, for another one hundred years, black Americans had to continue to struggle to become secure in the rights that this country's constitution professed to give them. Deeply embedded attitudes which reflect a system of caste based on race are not easily changed. But courthouse monuments to the Confederacy are being reevaluated throughout Virginia. While these monuments honor those who suffered in a horrible war, at the same time, they also memorialize a society which grew wealthy because of an economy based on an enslaved workforce, a society which attempted to legitimize slavery by teaching that people of color were not equal to white people. At a hundred and fifty years old, why not make new history and be a community which comes together to celebrate respect for all the people who live here? This can be done by contextualizing and relocating from the courthouse grounds a monument which represents a bygone era and a painful history. I speak on behalf of people who don't want to see Franklin County be left behind but be that place envisioned on the one hundred and fiftieth birthday video. Understanding and a compromise are possible. Thank you.
Tina Hanlon.
I live at two zero nine Arthur Circle in Faram. I'm here to say that I agree with everything that Dave Johnson and Ed Saunders have said tonight and what other supporters of the Friends of Faram Park have said at other meetings. I've lived in Faram for thirty-one years. I am a very independent person, and all of my many family members live far away from here. I don't have any family within four hundred miles of here. But I tell my students and others that I've stayed at Faram for this long primarily because it's such a strong and supportive community at both the college and in the in the community. I, I, like, like Dave said, it makes my head spin to see how quickly and efficiently and thoroughly the organization called Friends of Faram Park has organized, become an official nonprofit, have done extensive surveys and and discussions with community members and have put together their proposal. And these are people who do a lot of other things for the community as well. I want to stress the two things that I think are especially important about their proposal. And of course, the first is including a park and other public spaces. I I've realized in the past year that I'm very spoiled because in my many years here, I've taken it for granted that I have the college campus as a beautiful space to take walks and and do recreation and as well as work. And of course, anybody can come onto the college campus and sit on a nice bench or eat in our dining hall and things like that. But there are, you know, not everybody who comes through Faram realizes that they can enter the the college campus and do those things. And so the members of Faram Forward have made me aware in the past year that in the Village of Faram, there is not one public bench, not one public restroom that's just generally open to the public year round. So it's, I think, extremely important, the part of the plan that involves park area, community center, you know, spaces to do a variety of things. And I've heard that people are excited about the things that are planned this fall. And of course, the other part of it that's so important is the the plan to develop affordable housing. I know a lot of the, you know, the people who work at Faram College and Faram Elementary School and a lot of other places around here do not have high incomes. So I really appreciate the plan to develop housing that's accessible to a lot of people and that will be affordable for people who, you know, who want to live around Faram. We have a lot of faculty and staff at the college who don't live in Faram now, and I think that's a hindrance to their being a stronger part of the community. And, you know, if that's what they prefer, that's fine, but, you know, more affordable housing would be great. And I just want to thank you for your support of of all the things that we're doing in Faram. Thank you.
C. Holland, Purdue III.
I'm Holland Purdue, mayor of the town of Rocky Mount, and I'll be speaking on behalf of the town.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. At this body's last meeting, you proposed to pay fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years towards the purchase of a new fire truck for the Rocky Mount Fire Department. It is my understanding that a statement was made earlier in this meeting that the town manager and I had approached Mr. Tatum with a counter offer, and that counter offer was rejected by this board. rejected by this board. I want to say a few things about that statement. If I had known that this matter was going to be discussed or that a statement was going to be made, I would have been present. But since no one told me that item was going to be discussed and it was not on the agenda, I was not here. Part of the statement was that the county supplements the Rocky Mount Fire Department. That statement is quite misleading. It makes it sound like the county is not required to fund the Rocky Mount Fire Department, but they generously and voluntarily do so. The reality is that public safety is a legal obligation of the county. Towns are not required to fund public safety. If the town did not fund the Rocky Mount Fire, if the, the town did not fund the Rocky Mount Fire Department, the county would have to take on all costs. Let me repeat that. If the town did not fund the Rocky Mount Fire Department, the county would take on all of the cost. For one-hundred-and-one years, the Rocky Mount Fire Department has served the Town of Rocky Mount and Franklin County. The department and the town have covered the expenses. The county only recently started paying some of the operating cost of the department and only after the town informed the county that they would be considering sending a bill to the, to the county for every fire call because the county refused to help fund that department. Franklin County pays for one-hundred percent of all costs for fire trucks for every other fire department in the county. Why does the county pay one-hundred percent of the cost for fire trucks for every other department while paying zero percent of the cost for the trucks for the Rocky Mount Fire Department? Residents of Rocky Mount are Franklin County residents. Why do they not get the same funding and services that are provided for all other residents of Franklin County? We appreciate your consideration, but the county's proposed contribution does not reflect the county's fair share of costs providing fire protection services to county residents and comes with strings attached that do not make sense. Your proposal of fifty thousand dollars a year, one hun- uh, one million dollars over twenty years, is equal to less than twenty-five percent of the total of the financed purchase price of the vehicle, yet you are asking for equal ownership. Assuming this was acceptable, the county would have to provide insurance and sign the note and deed of trust for the vehicle. Has the county taken that into consideration? January first through June thirtieth, the Rocky Mount Fire Department ran a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-three calls with one-hundred-and-sixty calls being outside of the town limits. But let me remind you that one-hundred percent of those calls were in Franklin County. I have broken down the calls by magisterial districts so that each of you understands the importance of the Rocky Mount Fire Department. The Rocky Mount Fire Department ran one call to Ms. Smith's Gills Creek District, ten calls to Mr. Kundif's Union Hall District, thirteen to Mr. Thompson's Boone District, fifteen calls to Mr. Tatum's Blue, Blue Ridge District, thirty calls to Mr. Carter's Rocky Mount District. This number does not include the town's portion of the calls. Thirty-five calls were run to Mr. Nick Mitchell's Snow Creek District and fifty-three calls were run to Mr. Ronnie Mitchell's Blackwater District. When an individual makes a call to nine, nine-one-one, they are take, they aren't taking into consideration who paid for what. They trust us, their elected leaders, to make certain that they are receiving the best possible assistance. When the Rocky Mount Fire Department receives a call, they do just that without regard to our negotiations. So the responsibility lies with us to make certain that the Rocky Mount Fire Department has the necessary tools to provide assistance to all of our constituents, mine and yours alikes. You have paid one-hundred percent of the calls for the trucks and equipment for every other fire department in the county, yet knowing that more than sixty percent of the calls run by the Rocky Mount Fire Department are outside of the town limits, you have offered to pay less than twenty-five percent of the cost of one of the two new fire trucks. A few years ago, when a similar conversation was taking place regarding the funding of the operation of the Rocky Mount Fire Department, the county and town agreed the county should pay an amount equal to the percentage of the calls that were outside of the town, approximately sixty percent. If both sides agree sixty percent was fair on operations, we should use the same number to discuss capital purchases for both new vehicles. And there's more, but since my time is out, I will let you read that, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Steve Engel?
Steve Engel, sixty-five Ansinck Street, Rocky Mount, Virginia. As most of you know, I served as an elected official for the Town of Rocky Mount on both Town Council and Mayor for a total of thirty-two years. I'm here tonight to say that I do not believe that the town and county have been working together as well as they should and as the public expects. It sometimes appeared that the Board of Supervisors forgets that Rocky Mount residents are also Franklin County residents. And I've said before, and you've all heard it before, that everyone in Rocky Mount pays the same taxes that every other county resident pays. It often seems like the county thinks of Rocky Mount as an independent city, which it is not. Funding for the Rocky Mount Fire Department is one of the areas that is evident. Almost three years ago, the town and the county negotiated an agreement regarding the funding for the Rocky Mount Fire Department that Mayor Purdue alluded to. At that time, the county was not providing any regular funding to the department, even though the Rocky Mount Fire Department is the largest in the county, answers the most calls, and serves many people that do not live in the Town of Rocky Mount. One option that was presented to the county by the town was that the town to start billing the county for every time the Rocky Mount Fire Department went on a call outside the town. It was only then that the county agreed to enter into an agreement that requires the county to pay a portion of some, not all, of the department's operating expenses. I'm proud of the fact that we're able to reach an agreement between the county, town and county on that issue. At this time, the town and county need to be on the same page. We need to show the people of Franklin County that we are united in our efforts to provide top-notch fire protection and firefighting services to those residing in Rocky Mount and Franklin County. As a town and county resident, I urge the Board of Supervisors to work with the town and to pay the county's fair share of the cost of all fire trucks for the Rocky Mount Fire Department. Thank you.
Glenna Moore?
Glenna Hawkins-Moore, Scenic River Drive, Rocky Mount, Snow Creek District. Franklin County-born USCT Harrod Beverly survived the Civil War, but his younger brother Samuel did not return home. After the war, Harrod and his mother Nancy searched for Samuel. Their, their search led them to a Confederate prison in Salisbury, North Carolina containing Union prisoners of war. By eighteen-sixty-four, the Salisbury Confederate Prison had horrid conditions. A facility originally intended to hold two hu- two thousand five hundred prisoners ended up with ten thousand. The spread of disease like gangren, diarrhea, smallpox, and pneumonia was rampant. Beginning in the fall of eighteen-sixty-four, there was a lack of shelter, fuel, medicine, food, water, clothing, and sanitation. A primary doctor at the prison was shocked to see men so sick that they could not keep lice out of their eyes, ears, or mouth. A marker established by the United Daughters shows that the dead were buried in eighteen trenches. African-American POWs during the Civil War had Confederate hate and racism against them. Unlike white POWs, in March of eighteen-sixty-four, Ulysses S. Grant assumed command of all Union Armies. He ordered a halting of POW exchanges because of the Confederates' mistreatment of African-American soldiers in the US Army. The Confederate policy was to send them back to the South to their owners. Prior enslaved men were treated as reclaimed property. The massacre of African-American soldiers attempting to surrender at Fort Pillar, Tennessee, is what motivated General Grant to issue a formal demand that black and white POW soldiers receive identical consideration in their treatment by the Confederacy. The Confederacy would not accept it. Robert E. Lee said he did not believe anyone who was formerly enslaved warranted equal treatment as a POW. He said, "Negroes belonging to our citizens are not considered subjects of exchange. They cannot be returned to the Union." Since the first appearance of African-American soldiers in US uniforms on the battlefields, Confederates were angry and vicious. Therefore, General Grant felt morally compelled to demand the continued prohibition on formal POW exchanges. The Fort Pillar massacre became a rallying cry for the USCT who were fighting for their independence. It served to harden the resolve of African-American soldiers and "Remember Fort Pillar" became their battle cry.
Try this time, okay. Rebecca Saunders, two-four-five Nature Zone Road in Faram. Resilient, creative, hard-working, dedicated, industrious, amazing. Those are just a few words I have to describe my fellow community members, but there are so many more. Last time I came, I told you all of the reasons that I love Faram. The one thing I missed telling you about was my community. Community is what makes Faram Faram. Over the last few months, you've seen it firsthand. Our community has shown up in big ways, month after month, to show their support for a public space and limited attainable housing that truly helps our folks in our community. The Lions Club, Faram Forward, numerous individual community members have come out here repeatedly, every Tuesday night, once a month, to show you all just how important this is for our To every person here tonight and all of those who came before and those who couldn't make it, thank you. Thank you for creating a community that I'm so privileged to be a part of and a place that I'm endlessly thankful to call my home. You all are what makes Faram truly special and we are so lucky to have each of you. So when you, the board, consider the proposals for the Faram parcel, I humbly ask that you think of our community first. Please think of all the ways that our community could benefit from a public space and housing that fits our community's needs. And simply, we just ask you to please let Faram show you what we can do. Thank you all.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me talk. My name's Justin Woodrow. I'm the fire chief of the Rocky Mount Volunteer Fire Department. Been a fireman for nineteen years now for the fire department here in Rocky Mount. I've came up from the bottom all the way to the top as an entry member that was intimidated by everything I saw, scared of the giant shadows in the hallway. I was mentored by a lot of great men before me, a couple of them paying ultimate sacrifice in twenty-ten. Back in two-thousand-ten, when they paid that sacrifice, the town made a dedicated call to us to make sure we were in safe equipment with today's technology, today's safety, to keep us safe as we answer the call. I'm not here as a political opponent of either the town or the county. I'd like to say thank you for everything you contributed to us, the CARES funding that came to us in the last couple of years, thank you so much, you didn't have to give it to us. The funding arrangement that was arranged when I became chief about three or four years ago to help with the cost of the fire department, thank you. With the growth of the cost of the equipment and the need for extra equipment and special equipment in the fire service, we can simply not sell enough hot dogs. It just doesn't work. The ladder truck is in question when it was bought by the town back in two-thousand and built, the one to be replaced, was bought for just shy of a million dollars. The town didn't ask for any money at that time to help fund that. That current truck's replacement, if bought as a stock unit within the next couple of months, because there's only two left, is two-point-four million dollars. If we miss this opportunity, we go to three-point-five million dollars with the increase in fire trucks. We're not asking for something we want, we're asking for something we need. We needed to provide the support to all the business and industry within the town limits in the county, future endeavors in the summit or any industrial park. This truck serves a, a great deal towards our ISO. We also need it to serve our students that go to the middle school and to the high school that is a multi-story building within the Town of Rocky Mount. Without this truck, if it doesn't crank or doesn't show up, that second-story rescue becomes more demanding on what limited amount of firefighters we get there. I know I don't have a lot of time and I could talk for hours because I love to talk. If you guys know me, you know that. I'm very passionate and emotional, I'm as passionate as Ronnie Mitchell when it comes to the fire department. I just ask this, over the dealings with this truck that's coming up, I myself as the chief of the fire department has not been asked to be met with at any time, other than by the town. I'm not saying that as a clap my hands for the town. I'm saying I'm here to talk to you and I ask you as a representative of thirty-nine volunteer firefighters that will answer any call given in Rocky Mount or in the county of Franklin or even in jurisdictions neighboring us in Roanoke or in Bassett, where we went multiple times to assist with fire, or when we go to the other side of the Union Hall District to help a neighboring department and two of our firefighters die on the way there because the truck they were riding was older and not as safe as it could have been. I ask for you to consider coming to the table and sending your county administrator, Mr. Tatum, your chair, to meet with my mayor, the town manager, and myself, and for us to go in a room and find a resolve to the cost of this ladder truck. I ask you this respectfully on behalf of all the members of the Rocky Mount Fire Department and thank you for everything that you guys do because you contribute so much to our community that so many will not step up there and sit behind that podium and make these decisions. I know I'm, I'm out of time, but you all have my number. I'm willing to talk to you at any time and meet with you and I hope that we can come to a resolve between the two units. Because at the end of the day, we vow to protect life, property, and environment and political lines. Magisterial districts, if I say that right, do not consider on what we do in our heart in the middle of the night for free. And the last thing I'll say, excuse me for my appearance because this is a coat-and-tie presentation I should have made, but I'm supposed to be at my son's back-to-school night and I put it aside because I thought it was more important to be here to stand up for the citizens of my community and the citizens of the district I protect. With that said, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have no additional speakers.
Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak to the board?
We have one.
Okay. Come on up, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Susan Selvich. I live at thirty-eighty Turner's Creek Road in Faram. I don't really have much more to say than has already been said. I'm speaking on behalf of the eighty-four acre, acres out in Faram. I've worked for the college. I worked for the county. I am a real estate title insurance underwriter and I live in Faram. I've lived there since two-thousand. So I know the county, I know the college, I know Faram, and I know real estate. And that real estate out there is beautiful and we are all concerned about it. We have done a lot of talking to many people at the farmer's market and other events that we have held. We've got a lot of dedicated people who are learning. Our biggest problem, I think, in my mind, is we have no place to get together. We have no community center and that's something we desperately, def- bleh, desperately need. Faram Faith has been very good in letting us use their building for our meetings, for our blood drives, and for our farmer's markets, which has been very successful, but we have to depend on their cooperation and that might not always be there. The college has been a little bit difficult to, to work with for reasons that are obvious to us, but we just need a place where the community can come together and have parties and events and, and festivals and things like that. And we just don't have a place like that. So everything that Faram Forward and the Friends of Faram Park have heard, we, that's our main goal. The property would be perfect for a community center, it'd be a great place for it. And the rest of the property would be a great place for a park so kids could play and have stick forts and catch frogs and run around and just have a great time. We have a large homeschooling community that would benefit from this. And also, the kids at the college, as Dave said, would have the opportunity, and Ed said, would have the opportunity to learn hands-on with recreational development, with park development, with environmental science. It's just a learning area that could be used very, very well. We understand that there's proposals and we know that Friends of Faram Park- We understand that there's proposals, and we know that Friends of Farum Park is, is just getting started, but we have so much to offer, and what we don't know, we can find out, and people are willing to help us. And I think the proposal just goes with what we would like to have. And we're concerned that if another developer gets it, they won't know what we are, and they could clear-cut it, and then where would we be? And that would be horrible. So, we would really like you to think about us. We're Farum, we're a village, and we're willing to work and do what needs to be done. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I see one more person coming forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Robin Goodman, 35 Lynch Drive, Rocky Mount, Virginia. I am a parent of a Christian Heritage Academy student, and I'm an employee there. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but hearing the things about the Fire Department, and I take nothing from them, I hate to compare because what they're saying is the truth, but it was just moved inside of me to think that we have over 300 students at Christian Heritage, and I can guarantee you 90% plus are Franklin County residents. Their parents pay Franklin County taxes, and I just think about what they were saying about the Fire Department protecting whether it's Rocky Mount or outside of the Rocky Mount lines, and I just had to get up and say that when you choose to protect children, you choose to protect all children, whether their parents have chosen to put them in private school or public school. And I'm not trying to cast a shadow and say, "Oh, what if something happened?" Because I believe the good Lord will protect our children. But I think it says a lot when we choose what students to protect just because of the choices of what school they go to or made by their parent, because those parents, the ones that live in Franklin County, are taxpayers just like public school parents. And I would urge you to think about protecting all children in this county. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for coming out tonight. Again, thank you for taking your time to come out and taking part in a portion of the county business. At this point, we will be adjourned to, what's our next meeting?
Madam Chair, the next meeting, October, the date?
Yes.
October 17th?
Third Tuesday.
Yes, it's October 17th.
We'll be adjourned to October 17th.